From ICCBS and I welcome you all in the hybrid seminar on building climate resilient healthcare infrastructure in context of 2022 floods in Pakistan. We would like to start the event with the name of Alaa Tuhman Tala and for that I would like to request Hafiz Bilal.
Allah (ﷻ) has blessed the wicked and the righteous. In the name of Allah (ﷻ), the Most Merciful, the Most Generous. He has reminded us that we must remember. We have no duty to forgive them, except for when they repent and repent. He has forgiven them, the biggest sinners. Only by our own accord, shall we be forgiven. Allah (ﷻ) has blessed us.
Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir. Okay, I would now like to invite Dr. Nimra Iqbal, who is the moderator of the event. So please welcome Dr. Nimra.
Honorable Mr. Bilal Anmer CEO National Disaster Risk Management Fund, honorable Mr. Dr. Mohammed Vaseh. Dignity esteemed guests, ladies and gentlemen, Assalamualaikum and a good morning to all. And a very special good evening to our keynote speaker, the legendary professor Dr. Michael Peterson from Hawken, New Zealand. I am Dr. Nimra Iqbal Chawry. I was trained as a medical doctor in Pakistan and currently a research scholar at the Open University of Technology, A U T, New Zealand. I am here representing my organization Avoidable Death Network UK. I would like to officially welcome to all in this hybrid seminar on a very important issue focusing on the most recent humanitarian crisis in Pakistan. Our country has undergone a terrible tragedy recently, with almost 30 million people were affected, 2,000 people died and over 4 million rendered homeless. Our experience during this disaster of unparalleled magnitude has provoked a national debate on how to handle such crises, mitigate their effect and to build resilient communities to face future climate changes. Our country has undergone a Pakistan with a diverse topography especially prone to disasters. The country has reached some very high seismic activity in the north hemisphere. A riverine system from rising of five major rivers known for floods of high intensity. A desert in the east which involves a high meteorological drought. Racked mountains of the west with flash floods due to torrential rains. And glaciers in the north are melting and causing massive landslides and floods. There is a 900 kilometer coastal bench including in our landmark. In such a disaster-prone country, a resilient healthcare system is needed for response and recovery. Healthcare services lie in the center of any humanitarian crisis, including disasters. Their functionality and capacity to remain operational on the face of extremities is therefore crucially important. Today's event is an effort to direct this national debate towards practical steps of how to build a healthcare infrastructure which can withstand floods, earthquakes and other surge calamities and remain functional to deliver services at the time of need. This event also provides us an opportunity to learn from the leading experts and to foster productive international linkages in this important. We are fortunate to have guest speakers from three different time zones. Whereas the event is co-organized by leading institutions including International Center for Chemical and Biological Sciences, ICCBS, Pakistan Academy of Sciences, Avoidable Death Network and Siren, the S I N innovation research and education network. A warm welcome to all at the gathering partners. Now I would like to invite Dr. Mohammed Vaseh, who will be presenting his inaugural remarks on behalf of Pakistan Academy of Science.
Assalamualaikum, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Substituted to Dr. Nimra, thank you very much. And I think it's a very important event, not only for Pakistan but for the global community. Because disasters are happening around the world. In Europe, the climate is changing and Pakistan is especially prone because we have the world's largest population of glaciers. So 30% of the world's glaciers are located in Pakistan. And because of this climate change and increased temperature, it is possible that in future we are going to have more floods and more rains and more kind of disaster. So this seminar is not only about the flood in 2022. But basically we are here to learn that how can we prevent the flooding in 2023 or 2024 and how can we prevent deaths and disabilities and loss of life and property in future. So this is for preparedness for the next disaster which is I think are very going to be very important. So I would like to first thank all of you on behalf of Pakistan Academy of Science and Srinjana that you are here. And I am especially thankful to our foreign speakers and all the participants across the country and across the globe who are with us. And hopefully based on the findings of this webinar, we will be submitting our recommendations to government of Srin and government of Pakistan and international and provincial disaster management authorities. So we can work with them in future to improve our disaster preparedness and to save lives and property in future. So again, I am thankful to Nimra for organizing this seminar and I am thankful to Bilal and Dr. Iqbal Chawry that they are here for us and for all of you that I think you are taking interest in this important topic. And this is not for ourselves but for our future and our next generations to come. So I think it's a very important seminar, hopefully it would be a good learning experience. So thank you again.
Thank you so much, sir. Now I would like to invite Dr. Bilal Anmer from the National Disaster Risk Management Fund to give his inaugural remarks.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim and a very good morning to all of you. And my sincere thanks to Dr. Iqbal Chawry, Professor Dambroman and Dr. Vaseh. And the most importantly to all the students of this particular institute and the University of Khaifi. Indeed, I am glad to be there this morning. And coincidentally, we had a wonderful overview this morning. There was a trick delegation from N D U and it actually gave me a wonderful opportunity to learn a lot more about what ICCBS is doing and the phenomenal work and the expert work it is doing in cutting out technologies and the sciences and how it's contributing into the society. So thank you very much for providing this opportunity and I am immensely happy and delighted to be here. This webinar, one of the reasons actually I am here, been very practitioner, practitioner in the sense of disaster management, disaster risk reduction, disaster risk financing. I think this is extremely important that the academic institutions and the research parties and students who are the vodood and the shake of the feet and basically take the key interest into it. I think it would be understatement, understatement to say that the whole world is when it comes to the climate impact, it comes to the disaster, the frequency and density of the disaster which the world is facing, it could be understatement to say that we're living in an extremely uncertain time. This is not only unique to Pakistan, this basically applies to many other regions of the world and many other countries. But coincidentally, we happen to be right now passing through one disaster and which which of course is in terms of legality, in terms of the scale, which is something which has never been, unheard of, which has never been experienced before. I was talking with some of the friends back in Islamabad and they, it's not fully, fully confirmed yet, but I think there is some assessment at the global scale that the actual organizations that the entities are doing it, which might, might come to the conclusion that this is, this is going to be one of the, one of the biggest climate risk use disaster with the, when humanity have, might have seen or experienced so far. Of course, the rain and the might always go back tsunami, but tsunami was an earthquake and it doesn't really classify it into that, that classification. So it is, it is a very uncertain time and the likelihood of course are not really up to par with it in many, many different ways. And the health sector of course is one of those forefront sectors which are exposed to it, which get directly impacted to it and they, they get the brunt of the impact and they, and they expose it to it. And then they have this noble father, the D P F, and have served in the humanity and the E at the forefront once again to provide the relief and the support and the rehabilitation and the closure of the disaster. So first of all, thank you very much. I'll be talking a little bit more about the ground, but I very much look forward to the interaction. What you can hear is a very practitioners view, so not a very, not a very scientific or not a very research oriented. I think it's, this is the beauty of being here today is that we are actually able to combine them together and fit them together and tell them together. You know that we talk about viable, we want people to work in these situations. So thank you very much, Dr. Nimra. Thank you Professor Iqbal and everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. For, we have Dr. Haideen Yuki Shirushita from Avoidable Death Network, Prepare Fifth and Awful Remind. Can I request my guests, the guys to take please take seats in the front door so you can receive with the, this has, this slide to introduce A D N. Can you share your screen with us? Would it be possible for you?
How many people we have online?
So I would like to invite Dr. Haideen Yuki Shirushita with one of the founding members of Avoidable Death Network to give his welcome remarks. Just a brief introduction about Dr. Haideen Yuki. He is an associate professor at the Graduate School and Faculty of Society and Safety at the University of Japan. His research interests are in the areas of disaster education, risk communication and science and technology societies. He is one of the founding members of A D N and works on the development of A D N strategy and plans as well as the public engagement activities and leads the A D N's junior champion project in Japan. So over to you, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. So, this is the introduction of Japan. So, yeah, Dr. Nimra, thank you very much for your kind introduction. It is great pleasure to give a welcome address and make introduction of A D N. As Nimra kindly introduced, I am one of the founding president of A D N. And then I have, you know, the COVID, the old chief also, founding president of A D N. And I'm a very, 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 he's going to give a lecture today. So before I introduce about A D N, let me talk a bit about the recent flood in Pakistan. So the recent floods in Pakistan have been widely reported in Japan as well. It is a huge flow disaster of unimaginable scale with one third of the territory of Pakistan area flooded. So South Asia is one of the most vulnerable regions to the effects of climate change. I think this flood marks precisely the torrential rains they have, but also the result of the climate change. It is fortunate that although the flood was massive, but only about 1,600 people were killed in the flood. Of course, this is a big number, but in contrast, it's, you know, the floods, the subscale of the flood, it is relatively small, I think. However, we should consider that compared to earthquake and floods can be predicted to a far time extreme in advance. Hence, this is from, from mostly avoidable. We should think how we can reduce the direness. In addition to the directness, we should consider secondary risk. After flood, the important thing is to maintain sanitation. In Japan, flooding can also lead to unsanitary conditions as to create a sewer system overflow. These unsanitary conditions can lead to a variety of infectious disease which can cause disease if not treated properly. Having avoided direct disease from flooding, this secondary disease must also be avoided. So it is expected that such floods will continue to occur not only in Pakistan but in many other countries. So in this regard, today's special session will be beneficial, not only beneficial, not only for Pakistan but for all countries in the world. So today, we have heard repeated from distinguished speaker to discuss this important. I would like to thank all of speaker for agreeing to give lectures today. Finally, I would like to thank Pakistan Academy of Science, International Center for Chemical and Biological Science, S I N Innovation Research and Education Network and Royal Services Network for the effort in overnighting this special, special session. Okay, from now on, let me quickly introduce A D N. So the A D N is a diverse, dynamic, inclusive and innovative global network of experts, traditional researchers in better sleep in avoiding human disease from natural hazard, naturally triggered, ecological hazard and human-made disaster in rural and middle eastern countries. So A D N is not an energy union. A D N is led by two universities, one is based in the UK and the other one is a fancy university, my institution. So University of Leicester, U F M C, in this practice and management. And our university company got the P A, P S D in safety test. So this is A D N's purpose. So our purpose is to help positive makers and practitioners make better decisions to save lives and reduce injuries to achieve sustainable development. And our vision, what we want to achieve by 2030 is to be a leader as global leader of avoidable diseases or impactful research, solutions and services. So this is my final slide. If you are interested in A D N, it is free, so please join A D N. You can find us by, through Facebook, Twitter, Instagram and LinkedIn. Yeah, so that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Haideen Yuki. So this concludes our inaugural part of the international seminar. And can I please request Dr. Mohammed Vaseh to join me in the moderator's chair here with me? And then we can proceed with our first keynote lecture, set through here.
I'm here. I can come in.
So our first keynote lecture is by Dr. Bilal Anmer, CEO National Disaster Risk Management Fund. Dr. Bilal Anmer is an international climate policy and sustainable development professional with a reputation as a leading technical expert with over two decades of diverse experiences in the field of climate change. Since 17 January 2022, Mr. Anmer has been appointed as the CEO of the National Disaster Risk Management Fund, registered under section 42 of the company's act to provide funding to the government and non-government entity undertaking risk production activities against natural calamities and climate induced risks to make Pakistan resilient against disasters. We are honored to have you among us and look forward to hear what you have to share on this very important topic. Over to you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much once again. And let's get to the business. So I think we, we had an opportunity of sharing good words and inaugural sentiments. I think the fact remains that, as Dr. Vaseh said in the beginning and Nimra, you mentioned as well. Right now, we are in the middle of a disaster of a very unique, unique character and nature and scale and gravity. Thank you very much. Thank you. So I would, it's, it's unique and it's different in the sense that it's not a riverine flood. It's not a flood which is coming out of the glacier, glacier outburst which Pakistan has been facing. And in all likelihood, the density and the, and the frequency of those kind of floods are also, are also going to increase in the coming, in the coming years. So the science is very clear, the data is out there and the predictions are now close to accuracy. So we would need to be extremely, extremely warned about it and we need to be extremely worried about it. But right now, what we see and especially you sitting in, in the province of Srin, it's, it's, it's a disaster which came out of the torrential rains, which is the, the, the rain outburst. And that basically means that all the preparations with governments, the different governments, from the federal to the provincial levels, they might have been undertaking and the super product of 2010, the lessons they might have learned from those floods, they are basically ineffective, they are not really workable solutions anymore. So in terms of the disaster management, disaster risk reduction, I think this, this, this throws us, this puts us in a very, very uncertain situation. And we basically need that all the approaches and the scientific models and the relief rehabilitation and reconstruction work and the disaster which we might have learned in the last over 10 years, that need to be re-questioned, that need to be reconfigured and redesigned. So this is, this is what we, we are right now in the middle of it. And this is what the governments and everyone else has to prepare for it. Now, the health sector is always a victim as well as the life-saving support out of any disasters. So they are at the forefront and in Pakistan, we are again, once again, in a kind of very peculiar situation where the health network and the provisions and these provision of services to the, to the masses, especially to the rurus people, is, is not really up to the mark. The governments have over the years, over the decades, they have been doing a kind of a tremendous job in terms of setting up the health networks and the health systems. But the fact remains that it still is very much missing from the, from the, from the vast, from the vast geographical areas as well as the peoples who do not have access to it. So in that context, rather gloomy and gloomy context, I think this today's exercise and the session becomes extremely, extremely important. And I hope we, we do, we do learn few things out of it and we are able to take it forward to some, somewhere. And I hope we do learn few things out of it and we are able to take it forward to somewhere. My own institution, National Disaster Risk Management Fund, is a curriculum dedicated to respond to exactly these kind of disasters. Near the relief efforts, but my main focus is to work on the disaster reduction to our world actually starts and finish is before the disaster happen. And then we of course, participate in a new decade, active role in rehabilitation and re-destruction work as well. So let's see what is a disaster. This is a very standard definition, and which you can find and we can show that you are extremely familiar with this definition from the literature. It's a serious disruption of the functioning of a community or society involving both people, material, economic, environmental losses, and impacts exceeding the capacity of community to cope with it. I mean, there are a couple of things, there are several important determinants in this particular definition. The one is the disruption, and the disruption up to the scale which basically, which disrupts the functioning of a society, of a community at a reasonable large scale. And then the second is the capacity of the community, of the large people, to cope with it and to manage it. I think if we look back a little bit into the history of Pakistan as well as globally as well, you will see that this definition applies and fits into many of the many disaster. The only challenge right now and the challenge which we are living through, and once again, the research and the science, especially the climate change science is telling us, is that these determinants are going to become even more critical and they're going to become even more serious. So the disruptions and the level and the scale of disruption and the frequency of disruption is going to become a lot more critical as well as a lot more severe. And coping capacity, of course, which is directly indirectly interrelated with the socioeconomic as well as the technological stage of the communities and the society is of course never going to meet up and never going to match up. So this is a serious kind of a catch-up game in which many societies of the world are living, and Pakistan happened to be in an even more unique situation. As we know that our topographical conditions as well as our socioeconomic conditions actually put us in an extremely vulnerable situation. There is this very popular quote, there's a popular saying, which basically is being quoted very frequently these days, that Pakistan is placed at number five in the global risk index. This is German global risk index, and which is based on the vulnerability and exposure of the vulnerability for any country and a society have with the upcoming disasters, which of course is true. So Pakistan have actually graduated from number eight and number seven to number six. So our vulnerability is actually increasing. And I'm not talking about over ten of years of time, it's just in a matter of last few years, which we have actually moved upward in terms of our vulnerability to the next disasters. So since it is about the coping capacity, so any disaster is manageable. Of course, it depends on the preparation of it, it depends on the socioeconomic conditions and the health of a society and a country. So the disaster management in the literature and in the practical approaches is all about the creation of action plans and implementation mechanisms, which basically reduce the vulnerability. No disaster management plan can completely eliminate the hazards and the risks. And the whole purpose of these plans and the disaster risk management approaches is to minimize the risks and to minimize the impacts and effects on people, on communities, on societies, and of course, on the economic systems as well. So as I was saying in the earlier on, that this is an interesting time because what we are seeing is that the nature and the scale of the disaster is so frequently changing and is changing at much a faster pace than these societies can really adapt to it. And even if we are able to adapt, I mean, there is a growing literature in the sciences which basically saw that, which we tell us that there is a inherent limitation to the adaptation. And what also we see is that the mitigation actions of mitigation responses are not really up to the mark. And so for a very long period of time, and it's really, really hard to tell, we, not only Pakistan, but the many societies around the world are going to remain in this kind of situation, where the disaster management system, that are disaster management approaches, has to be upgraded, they have to be constantly and continuously to be reconfigured in order to minimize the risks, in order to address the effects of it and the impacts on the large, at a large scale. So this is the beginning nature of the disaster, the disaster risks. What you're seeing on my left-hand side, the figure is actually, the disaster risk was much simpler, it was much clearer, and basically has this combination of exposure vulnerability and natural hazard. And for a very long period of time, we learned this. And this, and we put up our action plans and our response ideas against this very, very well-established understanding in the literature as well as in the practicality of it. But what we're seeing here, this is, the things are becoming really complicated and it's becoming really muddier. There are layers and layers which are being added up, which makes the whole disaster mechanism a lot more complex. So the natural hazard is compounded and complicated by the impact of the climate change. And then we know that the poverty, environmental degradation, ecosystem balances, a number of other factors, they of course complicate the picture on the vulnerability side. And now we also see the poorly planned development, and this is what we are seeing. And this we see in Pakistan actually at a much, much bigger scale, have various direct influences and direct relevance to the exposure and environment. So what we're seeing here is that the climate change has this kind of interlinkages and cross-cutting impacts both with the hazards as well as with the exposures, exposure. And when they of course, they are combined together, the vulnerability increases and it actually expose the societies to a much greater scale to the impacts and the disaster risk. So there is a number of factors which can be added, and it of course changes with the different societies. And within the society, the changes with the different population groups and the demographic impacts as well. So we know that the climate change, ecosystem decline, environmental degradation, they are key determinants. If we combine this with the population growth and the development approaches, which we have seen and we have adopted and we have put into the practice, and of course, it makes the whole thing very, very complicated. And similarly, with the models of economic growth, which are largely based on the mass scale industrialization, and which of course are based with the underlying understanding that the growth and the development is all about harnessing nature and then fighting with the nature, not really to be homogeneous and to be benign with the nature. So what we are seeing is that disaster risk is dynamic, it's changing its character all the time. And especially with this, the climate change impacts, and which are nothing new, we, the science community knew about it for a long period of time, but it has not really made its way and appears in a very strong way to the policymakers. And now we are seeing the direct impacts of it. So the risk is becoming, it has always been dynamic, but since the intensity and the frequency has changed, so that makes it really difficult to assess the risk. And that basically requires a very regular and almost continuous reassessment. So I mean, if I look into this, if I look into this, what is going down in Pakistan, I think the relief effort which are being undertaken, I think the relief is relief. And of course, when a large segment of the society, the life size of the population, of course, is becoming, is underwater, is losing its livelihood and there are places to live. Of course, what we needed, we needed is their survival case and their survival support. And I think in this particular disaster, what is going down right now is, we are actually walking out of that phase and we're going to the rehabilitation, the re-destruction, where actually becomes even more important and critical that all these components, all these areas and the dynamic mechanism are fully taken into consideration. So what is the relationship, what is the relationship, what is the core relationship between the disaster and health? So you know, disasters, they impose multiple pressures on the health systems and cause disruptions for providing health services to people. At the same time, increases the risk and exposure to communicable diseases, transmitted by water, air, and better for the vulnerability and capacity of health systems. So the health systems, of course, are very much exposed. And they are those, one of the sector which is the frontline sector in terms of providing relief to the people. And at the same time, we're talking about the infrastructure, so they are very much a big supporter of the people. We're talking about the buildings, we're talking about the facilities. And when any disaster, flood, or earthquake, or anything else which hits those facilities, of course, their capacity to provide their services and to be, for people to be accessible to those facilities is threatened, is destroyed in the very first go. And that brings a lot more pressure on these facilities. But then there is, on the health side, there's a human component of it, and which is also equally important. Because you can have the beautiful hospitals, but if there are no trained people out there and no trained nurses and doctors and the clinical staff, then of course, those facilities are not really up to the mark and they're not able to deliver their services. Now, in a situation of disasters with an increased pressure on these facilities, there is a human limitation for the health professionals to provide these services as well. So the core relationship between disasters and the health sector is extremely important. And once again, I would like to emphasize, timing for this today's session is important because what we are seeing right now is, especially because of the unique character of this particular flood, the water has really stayed on, especially in the province of Sindh. And it has been there for last more than six weeks now, and it's receding at an extremely slow pace, slow pace. So what, there is a real natural health hazard, which is really coming up, it's been voiced up by many, many, many people, and especially the relief and the support agencies out there. And there are already reports which are basically saying that people are already exposed and they're communicable, waterborne and other diseases. So this is going to bring a lot more pressure on the health sector as well. So this is the, this is the kind of a scenario in which we are, in which we are. Well, I was kind of trying to understand myself for quite some time, so how the Pakistan health system is established? And what are the challenges which the system is facing? The system, I'm sure that you all know much better than me, that it has its own three layers, especially secondary and primary. And I think in terms of the accessibility and in terms of the kind of spread out to the rural areas, that might be questionable, but I think at least when the system was designed, it was designed in consideration to the needs of the people to some extent. But what we know from practicalities, that it is not a, it is not a completely public system, it's a hybrid system, where a lot of gaps and deficiencies are being filled by a number of other actors. And they're doing phenomenal and a very good job actually, when we talk about the private sector contributors, that's one excellent topic, and civil society organizations, and they have actually chipped in, they came to the rescue of the people in terms of providing. We see a lot of free clinics and free health services which have been provided. Some of the challenges which the system has already been facing, regardless of this disaster or the previous disaster, some of the challenges which have become very endemic with the Pakistan health system, they are, the system has not been able to upgrade and not enough funding, the resources have been made available in response to the population growth and the pressures. There's a high concentration of communicable and non-communicable diseases, and some of the data which actually come from the ground is absolutely shocking. And some of the very, kind of the diseases and the health challenges and the issues, which have been successfully eradicated in many other parts of the world, and they're very prevalent, they're very common in the rural areas of Pakistan across the board. We know that there's a low health access and health inequities. So in the urban area, there are opportunities and there are accessibility with a number of hospitals. And actually, sometimes they are very closely situated to each other. But when we move away from the urban centers, the situation and the picture becomes quite serious in terms of accessibility. Then there are vertical challenges, and then the financing constraints and availability of trained staff, actually, I mean. So I think this is a kind of a background, this is a situation which has been prevailing in Pakistan for quite some time. And this demanded a large-scale funding as well as the other types of resources to be made available to the health sector, and which has not been done in the recent past. I'm not too sure, I haven't checked the numbers myself, but I'm not too sure what percentages of budget of government of Pakistan actually goes to the health. But I can say that seeing the situation on the ground in some parts of the Pakistan, I can say that, and I'm talking to the people, there are financing resource constraints which I think felt. Now, we have experienced two disasters, two very, very different from each other. COVID-19, and we're just hardly walking out of it. And the other one is the flood right now, in which we are, we're right now in the middle of it. I acknowledge and accept that these are two very, very different disasters. One is global health pandemic, the other one is uniquely Pakistan-focused dominated affected flood. The one is, there is still, there was this morning, there were some talks about it as well. And, but there are some striking similarities between them as well, especially when you look into the health aspects of it. I think this is, this might give us a kind of an opportunity to look into it and see that how well-prepared and how well-responsible our health systems are to any kind of disaster. Because as I said, the health sector is very frontline sector, it's always the very first one. And then I'll choose some of the numbers in terms of statistics as well, in terms of needs as well. So I, basically, just to show that, the kind of incapacity of our health sectors and our health systems for any kind of disaster. So flood 2022, which is still going on, and our health systems are still dealing and coping with it. But I think the COVID-19, which is not too far in the past, I think that that left some important lessons for us as well. So in both cases, the life size of population affected, and the health management system leave, actually, turned out to be one of the critical element of the leaving recovery efforts. What we have seen in both cases is the unbearable pressures on basic health, infrastructure and health professionals. So this is, and similarly, the health inequalities further aggravate the disaster relief efforts. One area which is very common, it's out, and it's not actually really, it's flash out, it's not highlighted in a much more forceful manner, is the mental health complications. So I think this basically tells, I think, one point which is to drive out from this is that inadequate health systems or the health infrastructure have adverse impacts on a large, on a large scale. And it is correlated and combined with a number of other indirect impacts, for example, such as the mental health complications and a number of others as well. So when we're talking about the, when talking about the inequities or accessibility issues, and then the health sector not being able to provide the support in a timely manner, this of course erodes the capacity of the population, the life size of the population to deal with the trauma and the disaster of any of these calamities. So what are the, what are the, if we see from the floods 2022, and some of the determinants on the health sector impacts, and these are the numbers which have been corrected by UBSF under their wash program. And these are, these are quite interesting. So this basically tells us that what additional burden, what additional pressures this particular flood have brought to the health infrastructure in certain parts of the country. So the additional 15 persons of the population, which actually amounts around 5.4 million people, move from user-protected to unprotected drinking water. So, and I don't think I need to really spend time and really elaborate that what is the relationship between the safe drinking water or protected drinking water to the health conditions, to the health impacts. Similarly, around 19% of the flood affected, which again amounts to 6.3 million people, and lost their household sanitation facilities and because of the damages which came out of the, because of damage to the health. Open defecation from 21% in Greece, from 21% to 35% after the flood, once again approximately 4.5 million people, and additional 14% of affected person are not practicing hand washing and other hygienic practices because the priorities have changed. And people are living in a very, very different scenario. So since all these, these changes, all these kind of changes in the behaviors in a way are the key determinants, are the key components, which of course are going to have quite an impactful effect on the health sector. Now, if we combine this, if we read this with the previous slide, which basically the country has been suffering with the challenges in the health sector, and we see the additional burden and the pressure which is coming to the health sector, especially in a scenario, in a situation where the number of the facilities and infrastructure is already destroyed. I think that becomes a very, very big picture, and that basically shows that this moving on and turning out. Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry. Yeah, so this basically tells that this is not going to be an easy task to come out of it. Similarly, I was talking about it, the needs, so healthcare needs always stands on the top, top of the list. And this, again, if you see that, and this is based on some immediate need assessment, again, done by the other wash people. And the healthcare is number two from the top, which is 59%. So there's a, you know, what you see is a dramatic shift in the priorities of the people in the first period, from first to third month. And they do not really care about the education, housing, agricultural sanitation and other items, but what they want, of course, the food, and soon after the food, people want that, they want the care about the healthcare. So this basically shows the need for it. So the same three main priorities in the post-disaster response, of course, one is urgent delivery of life-saving and life-ful assistance, which has been done in its own limited capacity right now. The other one is the prevent outbreak of communicable diseases. I think this is the situation, this is the stage in which we are right now again. And there's a lot of emphasis on it to somehow avoid this health hazard. And the third one, of course, is the restored conditions for safety and living matter. People, I think the third task is going to be extremely, extremely important and equally difficult as well to accomplish. Now, this needs, this needs smart policy and program designs. Now, this needs smart policy and program designs. And any smart policy and program design need to be fully integrated and comprehensive. It needs a design policy and implementation framework which is able to identify the need, diagnose the conditions, and then design the implementation mechanism of the programs with the implementation framework and mechanism which is very much built into it. And then have the capacity and this scope for the redefining of it, because one system, one mechanism, one program action is never going to work. And this is the level of the research and the assessment on a continuing basis. So this is a smart policy and program design should look like, again, looks a little bit of cumbersome, but I think the fundamental point in this might is that it needs a constant and continuing reassessment and redesigning component. A little bit about NDRF, particularly health, and this is the last slide I saw. We, NDRF is a government fund under the Ministry of Planning, and it has a mandate for disaster risk reduction across the board. Health is a key component of our disaster risk reduction areas. And we have a lot of actions and activities and interventions in a very typical and classical program, for example, flood control and warning systems. Health has always been one of the key and core component of it. And NDRF provided a grant of fifty million during the COVID-19 pandemic for the procurement of the first vaccine and the PDEs. Very recently, we provided one point six billion rupees for the nationwide COVID-19 booster vaccine dose. And we are actually right now in the process of negotiating another emergency assistance funding for strengthening the basic and traditional health system in province in Punjab, Kekhia, and Lhuchistan. So this is, as you can see that, this very nicely sits into our core functions and the core mandate and areas of work. And we are actually bringing onboard some health professionals in order to assist us and support us in this particular area. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for a very interactive update on national disaster management. But now, we have slight change in the sequence, so we'll first go for Dr. Peterson. He is with us online. So Dr. Professor Michael Peterson is a geologist who has worked for much of his career with the British Geological Society, ending up as a program manager, economic minerals and geochemical baselines, and executive assistant director. Professor Peterson has also taken on positions as professor of applied geology at the University of Easton and professor of geology at the Oxford University of Technology, New Zealand, and honorary professor at the University of South Pacific, Fiji. He was director of the geoscience division of the Secretariat of the Pacific Community Base in Fiji and working with twenty-two Pacific island states. Much of his career has involved applying geoscience to the international development, particularly in the Pacific Caribbean, South America, and South Central Asian business. Professor Peterson has worked in areas such as disaster and risk and climate change, natural resource management, capacity building, institutional strengthening, education and research and policy development, collaborating with numerous developmental agencies and national governments, down to grassroots community levels. His technical areas of research include island arse, crystal evolution, continental collision, large igneous plateaus, geo-hazards, geoscience and society, and geoscience and international development. So your presence is an honor for us, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts about this important issue. Thank you for being with us. Go ahead, Dr. Peterson.
Okay, thank you very much, Professor Wasay. Can I ask if you can hear me first?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's very good. Thank you very much. And thank you also for Dr. Bilal Anwar for that wonderful talk and wonderful overview. And I can hear the frustration in your voice in your lecture with such an important and difficult challenging joke you have with disaster management, which is incredibly difficult thing to do. So I take my hat off to you. Well, well done for keep trying. Particularly, thank you to Dr. Nimra Ikbal, who has really pulled this together, it's very impressive, Nimra. I'm very honored to have talked to you a little bit here in New Zealand. And I just wanted to tell everybody in the conference room, what a wonderful ambassador for Pakistan you are, and how you are politically represented across the world.
Thank you so much, Professor. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd also like to thank Pakistan Academy of Science, the International Centre for Chemical and Biological Science, the SIND Innovation Research Centre, and the Avoidable Deaths Network for all of you pulling this together. It's really wonderful that you're doing this. Thank you, everybody. It's a great honor for me to talk to you. I'm very conscious, you know, that we are talking, of course, I cannot feel the suffering like you can, but the great suffering of the people in Pakistan, always, we read the statistics, and the statistics are dreadful, but we know that with every one of those millions of numbers we hear about, there's an individual suffering great suffering. And we are only touching on it in these sorts of conventions. But I know many of you are really live, you're trying your best to alleviate the suffering of so many people. And I really want to express my gratitude to you for that. I'm always very pleased to talk to a Pakistan audience. I actually owe Pakistan an awful lot in my life. My PhD actually was in part with Shahwi University. And they are great friends of mine, and I have spent a long time, this is Shandu, a pass, I'm sure you all know, I've spent a long time in the northern areas of your country. And in many ways, it helped make me as a geologist. So I'm always very grateful to Pakistan and Pakistan people and my Pakistan colleagues. So thank you for that. Okay, I'm going to just say a number of messages before I get into the lecture, please, if you don't mind. Because I think it's, you know, we often walk around asleep, you know, all of us, I don't mean you or me, or, I think a lot of us walk around half asleep when it comes to these things about disasters, because actually, all the signs stare us in the face all the time. So here are a number of messages. They might be very obvious, or you might think they're very obvious, but we don't seem to learn from them. Some of them have a Pakistan flavor and some of them are a bit general. One is, you know, you are the land of the Indus. Pakistan could have been called the land of the Indus. You all rely on the Indus as much as Egyptians rely on the Nile. And it is the nature of the river to flood, and sometimes flood an awful lot. And you should be thankful to that, actually, although I know at the moment you won't feel like that, but because of that, you have incredibly fertile country over at least forty percent of your land. That's one message. You could talk a lot about the Indus through the talk. The second thing is, I think we should get away with this talk of extreme events. Extreme events are normal events, and we just have to get, we've got to get rid of this language about one in a hundred years, one in a thousand years, or whatever. It is not helpful anymore, that language. It probably never was, but it certainly isn't now. So let's just plan for the worst and gear around that. Realistically speaking, I'm not scaring us every minute of, every day of our lives. And although, yes, we have climate change, the one thing I worry about climate change is we use it as something to blame. It's another thing, we can blame somebody else or something else. Actually, in Pakistan, you're going to have challenges. So instead of blaming climate change, which is the, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't take notice of it, but we shouldn't just blame it all the time, you know, we will always get these disasters, and we should plan for them. And also, you know, I've heard in some of the media that the rich world are getting blamed all the time for anything to do with disasters. Now, yes, the rich world put the carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. Ninety percent of the carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, I don't know, something like that anyway, is probably from Europe and from North America, because historically, they were the ones that got into the industrial revolution first, and they didn't care about pollution. Yes, yes. Terrible, terrible thing, but it's an unfair world, yeah? It's an unfair country. Karachi's unfair, everywhere is unfair. We're not going to change that. And to get distracted by trying to get rich countries to provide dollars, I think is a total waste of time. And I speak from someone who's worked in international development a lot. First of all, the rich countries will promise dollars and they will never give it. Ten percent of what they promised will actually happen. Out of that, you will get maybe one percent say in the way the dollars are spent. They will tell you how to spend the dollars. A lot of them, a lot of them will be spending money from their country, with their people and their services. So forget about that, you've got to be self-reliant. And attached to that, and I think Pakistan can play a huge, a huge role here. The voice of the southern world has got to become stronger than the voice of the northern world. And that's the 21st century challenge. That's a challenge I give to you all in the audience and all of your colleagues. And it's only when that happens that things will go the way of the southern world, and you won't be dominated so much by the voice of the northern world. And yes, climate change complicates things, but you know, we know about water, we all know about water. You don't need to have a PhD, you don't even need to go to school to know about water. Water moves with gravity and it likes occupying the low-lying areas, which is exactly what you're seeing in the floods now. So let's not make it too complicated with science and uncertainties and all of this. We can plan with very limited knowledge and the knowledge we have now. And also, remember, the Indus also suffers from great droughts. One of the first civilizations in the world, along with Mesopotamia, was in the Indus. Why did that civilization die? Not because of floods, because of droughts. And Pakistan can move between one and the other very easily, and we've got thousands of years of data for that. Okay, thank you for listening to those messages. I'll now move, could you move it to the next slide, please? So first of all, oh yeah, that's, this is two pictures of me. One, I hope this looks too different from what you can see me now somewhere on the screen. The other one is a younger version of me when I was in Gilgit, where I did my PhD. And this is one of the photographs I took, I'm sure you know that, Nangaparbat, from the Indus, actually. I'm standing on the Indus there, looking up at the Gilgit, looking at Nangaparbat. And this is telling me, the Indus is an incredibly powerful river. It's not just the size of the river, it's because it's flowing in the Himalaya, while it's flowing across a lot of mountain chains, isn't it? It's flowing across the Hindu Kush, it's flowing across the Karakoram and what have you, but let's just call it the Himalaya for this sake of today. Because the Himalaya is rising, Nangaparbat is the second fastest rising mountain on earth. It's moving up about centimeter a year or thereabouts. And this gives the river great power. And the river cuts down, and you're looking here in this photograph at one of the steepest continental slopes in the world. People argue about which is the steepest one, but this is one of the steepest ones. And it's there because of the very active tectonics in the north and the western Pakistan. And also, it's what we call it rejuvenates, it empowers the river to make it cut down. Next one, please. This one is actually in Ladakh, in India, but this tells you the same thing. Here is a gorge, the river is cutting down through the gorge, and it's the Indus too. And again, it just tells us this great cutting power. Next one, please. This is another part of the northern areas where the Indus is a bit wider, but it's going through a wider valley. But just look at the size of the rocks there by that man on the raft. He takes you across on the ferry. It probably doesn't exist anymore now, but it did once. Anyway, just look at the size of those rocks. They are not small, they are bigger, they're plenty bigger than a person, they weigh a lot more than a person. For a river to move those rocks means it's incredibly powerful. Next one, please. This is the, this is the 2010 Atiabad landslide, which has now got a big thirty kilometer lake behind it. And when the landslide moved, it went down one side of the valley in Hunza, and it moved up the other side of the valley, one thousand feet, three hundred meters. That was the power of that landslide. And what this is all telling us is that we, in Pakistan, you've got this very dynamic environment, including the dynamism between the mountains and the river, and the river eventually will move all this stuff down to the lower lands. Next one, please. Look at the size of this rock. And when I first went to the Indus, because I came from England, I'm British, and when I came from England, where we only have little rivers, yeah? And I saw this in the middle of a river, I couldn't stop looking at it, even then. You know, I was only a young man, I'm not a, I'm not a river person, to be honest with you, but I am a geologist. Anyway, I looked at this and I thought, my God, that river, when it's in flood, I wouldn't want to be around when that river is in flood if it can move things like this. Next one, please. So a river, now, we use a lot of terms these days, and the media, I wish I could retrain the media, I really wish I could, but you know, scientists sometimes are our worst enemies. The media hits on certain phrases, unprecedented, never seen before, biggest disaster, biggest this, biggest that, the worst calamity. They're always bigging things up out of all proportion. We've actually seen it all before. The problem is, the weather records don't go back very far. They only go back a hundred, maybe a hundred fifty years in the form that we know them now. That is nothing. We live on a planet which is four point six billion years old. The river Indus is thirty million years old, and it has done everything. It has flooded the whole of Pakistan and more, it has gone dry, and it's done everything in between. And these are in the upper parts, this is in Zanska, yeah, part of the Indus, where I'm doing some work at the moment, actually, in Ladakh in India. And you can see this big, on the left there, where it says, hey, the big is what we call alluvial fans, that come down from the mountains, and you can see through the alluvial fans. And when you look carefully at the alluvial fans, if you look at B and C, you'll see very different river deposit types. In B, you see this beautifully graded, fine-grained material. That's when the river is quite excited, sort of normal to bit excitable river flow. But then, when you get to C, you'll see it's full of quite big boulders and quite big rocks and things like this. And that's telling us, wow, we've got a big, we're in flood now, it can really shift things. And you can see in that deposit how it goes from one to the other very easily, spatially within that deposit, and that is a proxy for time. And this tells me, as a geologist, that the Indus is, being in flood is not an uncommon event. Next one, please. Okay, globally, you're living on one of the biggest rivers in the world. It's number twenty-three there on that slide in front of you. That's almost the same shape as Pakistan, you've got a little bit of Afghanistan in there, a little bit of India, a little bit of Tibet, but most of the rest of it is Pakistan on that twenty-three. So globally, you're living in the catchment area of the Indus. And I just wanted to reinforce to you that you're living on one of the world's biggest rivers. So it should not be a surprise that the events that are happening now happen every now and then. Next one, please. So let's look a bit closer at this catchment area. So the catchment area is every bit of land which captures water, which eventually drains into the Indus. And you can see here, it goes through, goes from China and Tibet, from India into the Punjab, Pakistan has the lion's share of the Punjab, and a little bit in Baluchistan, but Baluchistan is a very dry desert place with not many rivers at all, just rivers, no perennial rivers, really. And then down through into Karachi where you are, and into the Makran. So just look at the area of that, it's the same size, it's one point one six five million square kilometers. That's the same size as South Africa. So that's a huge area for water to come and collect, and then move around within the Indus system. Next one, please. I think any old satellite map of Pakistan, I just labeled some things there, you'll see that Pakistan is made up of a number of terrains. The geography is shaped by two or three things. One is the Himalayan collision, this is the big collision between the South Asian continent and the This is the big collision between the South Asian continent and the Asian continent, Eurasian continent. And Pakistan and Afghanistan are on the western side of that. The whole of Baluchistan is the western side of two plates grinding together. And it is a mountainous area and it's a desert area, okay? Alexander the Great, if you remember, he, him and his army had a terrible time going back through the Iranian desert after going through what is now Pakistan. And I think Alexander died actually in that desert. So these are not hospitable terrains. Then you've got the Thar Desert to the east and going into India. So you've got mountains, where do you all live then? Where do all you Pakistani people live? Ninety odd percent of Pakistani people live where it says flood plains and alluvium. Now, excuse me, can you see that word flood plain? So the clue is in the word, isn't it? Flood. That means it floods a lot. So like anything in nature, what, the great majority of what nature gives us is beneficial. It's given Pakistan this incredibly rich agricultural and flat land. And then if you look at the two maps, lower down, from the Pakistan Met Office, you'll see that one is land use and all the farming area is in the flood plain. And I emphasize the word flood plain of Indus. And all, nearly all of the population, the high population areas are in the same place too. So geology and geography and the Indus controls everything about Pakistan. So isn't it about time that we respected the river? We learned from the river and we learn to live with the river? Okay, next one please. So consideration point number one, the Indus is world scale and it's a powerful river. But being, you know, we can be too proud as humans and we forget this. The catchment area includes glaciers, mountains, hills, plains and, and it's also got a coastal delta area. Researchers argue over whether it's formed, but it's at least 30 million years old. So we can learn a lot from it, we're beyond the 200 years of record, of weather records we have. The catchment receives a lot of precipitation in a lot of forms. The alluvial deposits tell us about the history of the river and it tells us that the river floods a lot and it's very powerful. The Atiabad landslide is just one very dynamic example of all of this. And Pakistan is incredibly reliant and is shaped by the Indus itself. Next one please. Okay, if we, if we dissect a river system, it basically looks like this, this cartoon. And actually, this is a very neat cartoon for the Indus or a river like the Indus. So we have the mountains, so that's the Gilgit Baltistan area. And in the Himalayas, we have, we have the green southern parts of the mountains, around Abbottabad and places like that and just north of Islamabad. It's green because the monsoon comes in, hits the mountains. The rivers have to rise, then it has to rain and all the rain falls on the southern side. It then goes over a watershed and then you would get into the dry part of the Himalaya, which is like the Gilgit Hunza area into, into China, Tibet and all these sorts of places. So that's like Gilgit Baltistan is in that mountain area. We then go into still fairly mountainous but lower area like Kaipak Tumtwah or what was Northwest Frontier Province. And this is the area of Tarbeila Dam and all of that. And this is where our big floods can start because the, in terms of lateral floods. And then we go lower down through Sindh and then into where you are now Karachi, into the Makran area. So floods are natural, floods are every bit a part of the river system. And you can either do two things with, as a modern human. You can live with this or you can try to tame a river. Many countries have tamed rivers. I think the Americans were the first to really do this with their big system, the Ohio Tennessee River System. They had a system in the 1930s called the Tennessee Valley Authority. And they just built tens and tens of dams. And then that tame was a river that used to flood a lot. And of course, we see this in China, we see this in India, we see this in all over the world. You can tame the river if you want to, if you really like to. It costs you trillions of dollars. I, people don't like to do this anymore. It does change the environment, you know, and you'd have to look at what the environmental consequences of that would be. And it's probably not worth the effort, to be honest. It's much better to live with the flooding of the natural river system. Next one please. I won't, I won't stick with this one too long because you know this far more than me. But the red, this, this is the modern flood, this is from the EU. They claim they're doing a lot in the response, I don't know if they are or they're not. But they did do this nice infographic which I stole. So if we just focus on the left, it's a bit of a complicated poster. But all the red areas are where we've got the floods at the moment. And then on the right-hand side, we've got where, where the rain gathered. And as Dr. Bill Al Anwar said, there's another addition to this. It isn't just purely riverine from the floods in the mountains. We've got another thing here which are cloud bursts. And these have come out over the Sindh area and lower down in Pakistan. Again, they're not unique. For example, in the 2010 floods, which I'll talk about in a moment, there was a cloud burst in Ladakh, which actually is a desert region, which caused flooding in Ladakh for the first time in 50 years there. I don't know if you, if you remember the floods, I think it was of last year, the floods in Vancouver area of Canada. And they talk about rivers in the sky. The way weather systems can concentrate clouds to move like rivers through the sky. And they really focus a lot of rain over a very short period of time in one area. So these are the cloud bursts. There have been a group of scientists who have looked at the added contribution of climate change in the recent Pakistan floods. And yes, they come up with the fact there's an extra kick. With these cloud bursts, they might stay up to 50% is climate change, is extra climate change. And also in the mountains, about another 10 or 20%. And they'll argue about that. Now, that's wonderful science and it's really good and it's true and it's real. But I would argue, so what? The main thing is we know this river floods and it floods big. And that's enough of a warning, we don't need to go into complex climate change. We should just prepare with the knowledge we have now and then use this extra science that's coming in to add value of course to looking forward. Next one please. So this is climate change, then it's pretty basic, you know, the physics. You don't really need to know much more than this. The average global temperature around Earth at the moment, and I mean the average, I don't mean average in Karachi, you're a lot hotter than this of course. You're 40 degrees to you not long ago, I remember in the summer. But the average in the world over from Antarctica to Karachi is 16 degrees. Now, we're talking about two-degree warming, we've probably already got one degree of that. We're definitely going to get two, we might even get four degrees, yeah? So let's say it goes to 18 degrees. Now, that means that on average, the clouds will hold 13% more water. 90% of this extra heat goes into the oceans. And that means we get more, we get more vigorous convection. We get, we get a more vigorous movement of all of the weather systems, including the monsoon rains that hit the Indian subcontinent. And they come into Pakistan at the edge of the monsoons. Some years they can come, they can be more abundant than others. And of course, sometimes they miss. So you also have to be prepared for the opposite of floods, which is the droughts. But this is just a simple physics and you will all know if you go from, I don't know, if you go from Gilgit and then you go to Karachi, you'll feel a lot stickier face in Karachi because the Karachi air, especially being near the ocean, it can retain a lot of moisture and it's very humid. So we know this physics anyway, you know, this, this is schoolboy physics in many ways. It doesn't have to be ultra sophisticated. Next one please. Now, this is, these are diagrams of the 2010 floods and the 2022 floods. Now, I know that, we all know the 2022 floods are worse on one level. They've affected a bigger area, they've affected more people. But you look at these maps and they're almost identical, aren't they? There's not much difference in the two. Now, they're only 12 years apart. They're both extreme events. What do we learn from this? Pakistan has extreme events and it has them regularly. So let's, let's just accept it. We don't need to know anything more than that. And what's interesting, as you will all know far better than me, how the flood comes down in a wave. And this can be measured from the different barrages and dams such as Tarbeila down through Chashma, down to Boodoo in the south. At least this gives us a bit of warning of the movement of that flood wave. But in the case of 2022, you had those added cloud bursts, which just added that extra kick as well. But the point is here again, that, that, you know, there is, there is a regularity to the frequency of floods with or without climate change, to be honest. Next one please. This is worth reading, this is a paper by, a recent paper, 2012, Paul Ekassan-Ratman. And these two looked at floods since 1950. And you'll see the graph there in the top right. And you'll see the floods are fairly regular, aren't they? These are casualties, these are floods that have caused casualties. So you'll see in 1965, there was a flood that killed around about 10,000 people. And then the 2010 flood killed 2,000 people or something like that. And the current one is, looks like it's doing the same. But of course, they're impacting a lot more people. The casualties are just one of, one of the statistics. And we also know they're largely seasonal, they occur between June and September when the monsoon arrives. But we can get out-of-sequence floods, as in the bottom left, which tells us that we've got one in December there, for example, over that, what is it, that 62-year timeframe that Paul Ekassan-Ratman looked at. So they said that this time period included six landfalling, six landfalling tropical cyclone events. And still it was mostly seasonal, but not always. And we should be conscious of low-lying areas. So that was 2012. Next one please. So Al Jazeera asks, are catastrophic floods Pakistan's new normal? Well, I'd say they're not new, but they are not normal. So let's just take it that we've got big floods and they're going to happen a lot. So consideration point number two, how extreme is extreme? Well, the Indus is powerful. More than 90% of the Pakistani population live on flood plains. The clue is in the name. The geological deposits tell us these are very common, these floods. The good news, they bring great agricultural land. The bad news is they flood quite often and often in a big way. Climate change has a big kick. It amplifies the planning urgency needs. Maybe that's a positive thing of climate change, it's making us wake up. And I'm suggesting we forget the one in a hundred or 10,000 or even a million year language. It's not helpful anymore. Let's just plan for the big one. Next one please. So again, as Dr. Bill Al mentioned, there are other factors. And we have to, we can't just pretend we study rivers and we're geologists, we live with people. And for me, this is the biggest thing, it's population and nobody talks about population. Everybody talks about climate change, nobody talks about population, well, I do. So I don't know why it's been a thing with me. But just look at this, I mean, I just, maybe in my lifetime, you know, I used to really enjoy going to the South Asian subcontinent. But more recently, I, I'm not sure if I enjoyed it quite so much because I just noticed how many people are everywhere. And I thought I was imagining it, so I went back and looked at all the statistics. So look, in 1950, the world's population was 2.7 billion. In November, we are going to be 8 billion. The world is increasing at 140 to 160 million every year. That's an extra Punjab every year that we are adding to this world. So we're probably going to get to 10 or even 11 billion. Then it's going to flatten out about, at about its prediction, about 12, 1100. And it may slowly go down. So between, where we're, between 1950 and 2017, the world population increased by 2.8 times. But that isn't even everywhere, it isn't even everywhere. Next one please. Next slide please. This is the Pakistan situation, can you go back please, sorry? Look at this. It increased from 30 million Pakistan, 30 million to 230 million in 67 years. It went up eight times. How on earth did this happen? How did the government allow this to happen? Surely we can all see there's a link between population growth and environmental safety, especially when so many people are so poor. Please just look at that graph and think, can we not reverse this somehow? Of course, that brings up very sensitive discussions, I know. But surely we can't go on like that. Next one please. So Bangladesh, as you know, was your sister country, of course, once. But Bangladesh is, has some parallel in the floods. In fact, it floods a lot more than Pakistan. So it too has got a runaway population. So it's gone up to 175 million from about 20 million between 1950 and 1967. And look at the frequency of the floods in that bottom diagram, those bar charts. So it's flooding all the time and sometimes two-thirds of Bangladesh can be underwater. In the, and the right, and the right there, the top right one, you can see the flood depth for the July 2004 flood. So they know the floods come regularly and it used to kill many, many people. And it's not a rich country, Bangladesh, you know, I'm not comparing Pakistan with Iceland or Norway or somewhere. Yeah, you know, it's Bangladesh, Pakistan, we're comparing. But what's happening in Bangladesh is quite impressive. You know, with all, bearing in mind all their socioeconomic challenges and political challenges, they are managing the floods to a point where not so many people die anymore as used to happen. And they've accepted the fact, yes, we live in an area where over half of our country can disappear underwater for months on end and we live with it. And, and they can do that. And it could look, their country could look like that bottom-left diagram, just like Pakistan. A bunch of Pakistaners at the moment. Next one please. Okay, this is my second last slide. So consideration point number three. The higher the population, the higher the population density. And in Pakistan, only 30 to 40% of the land is habitable. And it's on the Indus flood plain. So you cannot live, you know, people not great, millions and billions of people can't live in deserts and mountains. On top of that, you've got the socioeconomic considerations, poverty, inequality, livelihoods, education, health, et cetera. Then you've got the government planning considerations. Things like policy, practice, willingness to help, the tax base, the avoidance of tax, the available dollars which could be available for doing stuff. And all of this has bearings on reducing the vulnerability and the exposure to hazards. So you can reduce exposure to hazards through managing settlement and population with respect to the high-risk flood areas. Again, in the conversations, who is on the higher ground in these flood areas? And who is on the lower ground? Who are the people that have had to move to the roadside? Who are the people who didn't have to move? I'll just leave it there, but I think you all know, I think you know what I'm talking about. The people who have the money or the power or the foresight to live in safer places do that. It's the vulnerable and the poor that don't have the choice. And it's, it's the responsibility of the educated and the better off to have a conscience for everybody else and to plan for everybody else. So some of these changes are hard, I know, they're very difficult. But what's the alternative? Just keep on going as we are now? I don't think that is an alternative. It will, it will involve national and regional conversations about ideal populations, about positioning of populations, about wealth sharing, about inequality, about using the tax base for priorities rather than maybe on things that, that less dollars could be spent on or rupees or whatever. Next one please, last one. So learnings, geological time is vast. Meteorological time is only 200 years, it's tiny, it's a drop in the ocean. All of the geological deposits are telling us one thing, the Indus floods a lot, get used to it. So know your hazard and don't knowingly, knowingly place yourself in the danger. So where the floods are now, that's telling you, that is the danger zone. So how do we manage that land better looking forwards? Reverse the actions, yes, for the climate change, of course. But we're stuck with climate change now and it's going probably to get to 2, 3, even 4 degrees. We're going to have to adapt to it. Don't, if I, if I were, if I were in your shoes, I wouldn't be complaining too much about grabbing dollars from America or whoever. They'll give some dollars begrudgingly. But you know, really, you're far better off being self-sufficient, building up your own self-reliance resilience and getting together with the rest of the southern world and helping one another that way. So look beyond just the mechanics of CO2 and technical fixes and all of that. But look to how you can manage this. So look beyond just the mechanics of CO2 and technical fixes and all of that, but look to how you can manage society and, and your National Disaster Management Office and all of this sort of stuff. Um, yeah, I think I've gone on enough, and maybe I'm, I'm turning into a preacher now, a mullah now, so I don't wanna do that. So I, I'll end the talk now. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Professor, for your very enlightening talk. Um, uh, I'm sorry, we, we have run over time, so we don't have, uh, time for questions right now. You can have it at the end of the session, or maybe we can email it to the speakers. So I, I'll introduce our next speaker. He is here among us. Uh, Professor Dr. Mohammed Vasek. He is currently a professor at the Al-Ahmad University. He's a past president of Pakistan Society of Neurology and Pakistan Stroke Society. President of Neurology Awareness and Research Foundation. Chairman of Advocacy and Awareness Task Force for World Federation of Neurology. Editor, Pakistan Journal of Neurological Sciences. Chief Editor, Jahane Asam Neurology, Neurology Public Awareness Magazine. Chair, chief grants research committee at Al-Ahmad University and co-chair NCD Thinktime. Dr. Vasek has received several national and international awards for educational, research, and advocacy activities. Including the Teacher's Recognition Award, and the Distinctive Teacher Award, Outstanding Teacher Award, Gold Medal for Research, Advocacy Leader of the Year Award, Victor, Victor Rivera Award, and Lester R. Bright Found, Founders Award. He was awarded Fellowship of Pakistan Academy of Medical Science and Gold Medal in Health Sciences by Pakistan Academy of Sciences. Recently, he was elected as fellow and secretary, Karachi Chapter by Pakistan Academy of Sciences. He has trained over fifty neurologists under his supervision as a CPSP supervisor and two neurologists from Afghanistan funded by AAN and FMIC. He has received thirty grants from various national and international agencies as principal investigator. His publication bibliography includes two thirty-seven papers in peer-reviewed medical journals. The combined impact factor of his scientific publications is more than five-hundred-and-ninety-eight, and the collective citations exceed six-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-eight. He has been an invited speaker and presented at more than one-hundred-and-five international conferences with more than one-hundred-and-forty presentations and lectures. He's an active reviewer of research grants and scientific papers from more than twenty-five journals and magazines. We are honored to have you here with us, sir, and we would, we are very keen to hear what you have to share on this very important topic. Over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, thank for the long introduction. Now, my topic is more related to the current challenges and what we can learn from these challenges for future preparation. And it's all targeting related to healthcare. So healthcare challenges, refugees basically, what disaster lead to, disaster lead to refugees and migrants. So most of this presentation is revolving around refugees and migrants, because that's a natural result of the disaster. Now, refugees issue is not for Pakistan only, it's a very global issue. Uh, the United Nations even have a High Commission on Refugees. Uh, a United Nations also controls, United Nations International Organization of Migration. So it's a, it's a very important global issue, about ninety million people around the world who are refugees or who are basically living somewhere else, uh, as compared to what they were living before. And about twenty-seven, uh, point one million refugees, uh, or half of whom are around, less than eighteen years old. Fifty-three million are in the same country, so we call it internally displaced persons, basically. And eighty-three percent are in low and middle-income countries. So refugees is a, is a major issue, it's a political issue, it's a social issue, and it's a major healthcare issue, uh, for people who are dealing with the health. Now, refugee issue in South Asia is also important, especially for Pakistan. Uh, we have two-point-five million refugees in South Asia, most of them in Pakistan, so one-point-five-four million in Pakistan and about one million in Bangladesh. And most of these refugees are coming from Afghanistan and Rohingya, Myanmar, uh, which, and we are the hosting countries for most of these refugees. So we are kind of used to have these refugees for long periods of time. And we are handling their health issues and challenges for, for many, many years. Uh, this is a book which we have recently published, which is neurological issues and migrants and refugees. And this is a chapter we wrote, neurological and mental health problems among refugees of South Asia. So this is based on a lot of research work we did in the South Asian refugees, especially Afghan refugees and Rohingya refugees in Pakistan. Uh, now, in Pakistan, most of the data which is related to internally displaced persons or current refugees is coming from NDMA, PDMA, which is Provincial Disaster Management Authority, and provincial governments. So at this point, there are more than three billion people who are still displaced. There are thirty-three million people who are affected from the, uh, floods, but three million are still displaced from their home. And these, half of these are living in relief camps, and those relief camps are supported by provincial governments, PDMA's and NGOs. Now, two-point-five million people out of these three million are basically living as temporary settlements on their own. And they are partially supported by the provincial government, PDMA's and NGOs. So half a million living in camps and two-point-five million living in kind of, uh, settlements, but mostly in the city area. Now, we already had pretty good experience related to healthcare of refugees in the past. Uh, we were involved in the earthquake of two-thousand-and-five, and we did a lot of healthcare work in internally displaced persons after the KPK operation and dealing with refugees and Rohingya. So there is lots, lot of observations based on those, uh, challenges. So this is a paper we published in WHO Golem, which is the premier world journal. And this is what, after that earthquake, and we, at that time, we suggested that Pakistan should be much better prepared for future disasters. And we said, at that time, we suggested that Pakistan should have a disaster management authority dealing with these kind of disasters. So this, uh, we kind of still have the same issues that we are it's still facing the preparedness problem for disasters in the future. Uh, this is a paper which we in, in-depth looked at, uh, the healthcare issues of internally displaced persons who are living in camps and, and, and living in different places, especially in the KPK region. This was published in Disaster Medicine. So now we come to this, uh, issue which is currently faced by us, is twenty-twenty-two flood. And that's, uh, we are, uh, talking about. So one-third of Pakistan is flooded, we know that. About thirty-three million people affected, ninety percent in Sindh and Rajasthan, sixty percent women and children. Seventeen hundred dead and maybe about thirteen thousand injured. And half a million are still living in camps. So this is the current situation after even two months of rains we have, or after the end of the monsoon season. So these are the healthcare challenges, which we have complied and we'll discuss one by one quickly. That what is the issue and how we can, uh, fix these child issues, so we'll be discussing, this is our time. Now, the most important issue at this point for the refugees' health is the women's health issue. Uh, because about, out of all the thirty-two million affected people, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand are pregnant. And about more than seventy thousand are expected to deliver their babies this month. So we, this is a major humanitarian crisis we are facing right now. That we don't have facilities where we can, uh, you know, uh, make them deliver safely. And this is a major problem. About fourteen hundred health facilities in Sindh and Rajasthan, they have been destroyed totally. And, uh, we are having problems with the prenatal care, birthing facilities, even early postpartum care. Pakistan already had a very high maternal mortality rate to start with, like even of the highest maternal mortality rate of, to start with. And we are kind of worried that if we don't take good care of these women, then not only this will lead to a very high maternal mortality and a very high neonatal mortality in future. So this is a very important, uh, area which has to be addressed, and we are working with the government and non-governmental organizations, that they have to develop mobile units, uh, or mobile hospitals, especially uh, delivery care centers. So these are places where, uh, this can be delivered. So this is an important healthcare issue which has to be addressed, and it's mostly in the same area. The another issue is for the children. Now, United Nations Children's Society says that there are three billion children who are basically in need of humanitarian assistance. And neonatal care is a very important issue, people who are recently born, the kids, uh, we are having problems with vaccination. So polio campaign is already disrupted in the same area. And for long term, I think the schools are, you know, about eighteen thousand schools in Sindh are totally damaged and destroyed. So this is a long-term impact and rehabilitation for young children, uh, which is going to be an important issue. It's not only related to health, but on, uh, even for their future development. At this point, the most important problem is infections. We are, and this is not only the refugees area, it's all across Sindh. Malaria is a big problem, because this, uh, stagnant water is a fertile ground for mosquitoes, and dengue is a big problem. So at this point, these are two mosquito-borne diseases, so we have very high, uh, prevalence of malaria and dengue at this point, especially in Sindh region. And a lot of people have already died of malaria and dengue. And that is not only in the refugee areas, all across, even in Karachi, we are seeing a lot of dengue and malaria patients. In refugee area, we are seeing infections, like diarrhea, for example, gastrointestinal infections, which are water and foodborne infections, wound infections are very common. Skin infections are very common. So these are something which is like being reported daily, about fifteen thousand cases. This is the data from the government, that fifteen thousand cases of skin infections and fourteen thousand cases of diarrhoeal diseases, and thirteen thousand cases of respiratory illnesses are being reported of, on a daily basis from these government-run medical camps. I think major issue in this refugee area is the supply of the clean water. A clean water supply is a problem to start with in Pakistan, especially in rural areas. But at this point, less than ten percent of these refugee population has access to clean air. And we are now facing a major problem, which is a result of unclean water, is waterborne infections. So we are seeing a rise in typhoid, cholera, giardia, dysentery, coli, hepatitis C because of this, uh, unclean water. So this is something which has to be addressed. Uh, food poisoning is also, uh, a issue coming out because of this lack of water supply. Now, nutrition is, has a long-term effect. This is, I think, we have to worry that this flood refugees, they are going to have a long-term impact uh, on their nutrition. And this is the, the data we have from even two-thousand-and-ten floods. Uh, the survey, which was done by, uh, WHO, they showed that two-thousand floods led to a huge nutritional deficiency in, in Pakistan. And that nutritional deficiency had a long toll on kids of Pakistan. So not only protein, calorie malnutrition, vitamin deficiencies, severe acute malnutrition, so these are the things which we are facing right now, and this is an important area we have to address. That how can we change the nutritional status of people who are being affected? So we are giving and providing them some food for temporarily, but that's not going to solve their long-term nutritional issues. Skin diseases are very common, largely because of allergies and skin infections. SKBs is a very common infection in our part of the world, uh, and fungal infections. Excessive sun exposure lead to burns and other skin diseases. So this is another area which is kind of largely not addressed, because most of the clinics or hospitals who are running in those areas, they are not supplied, uh, with the skin treatment or skin, uh, treatment therapies or options. Uh, another major area is access to care. You know already that most of the primary care facilities are destroyed. And access to secondary care facilities, especially THP hospitals, the DHP hospitals is kind of, they are inaccessible because of the, uh, infrastructure is destroyed, there are no roads. And even if you are able to get to the DHP, THP hospital, they don't have doctors or the supplies, so that's, that's a major problem. So this is a, a, a major challenge, and this is going to be a challenge for even next upcoming year, that most of these hospitals, we have to build their operation theatres and birthing facilities and get the supplies and doctors to these facilities. Uh, trauma is a problem. A lot of people had trauma, about three-hundred thousand people. And a lot of people have trauma to their limbs and, and, you know, they are splintered. So these, uh, need to be treated. Otherwise, this will lead to a lot of disability, um, in this part of the world. And we have to work on infections and rehabilitation related to, uh, trauma to these patients. Now, more, a lot of people are living in open skies, so, uh, they are exposed to heat and heat stroke, dehydration, skin burns. So this is something, uh, which can be quickly done by giving, providing them tents and clothing. And that is kind of being supported by PDM and NGOs. Availability of medication is a major issue. Uh, there are a lot of medications which are not available to these patients. About twenty percent of these, uh, people who, uh, have been the flood affected have non-combienable diseases, other diseases like epilepsy, high blood pressure, diabetes, and infections. So they need antibiotics, uh, and long-term treatment, anti-epileptic medications or anti-hypertensive medications. So this is something, a long-term supply of these medications is important. We have severe shortage of even routine medications like Paracetamol. And now we are facing raw material and production problem, transportation, and cost inflammation by pharmacy. So this is also another issue which is, uh, important healthcare issue related to refugees, and not only related to refugees, but for all other people. And a lot of these medications are not supplied by PDMA or NDA and GS, NGOs. So this is a major shortage area for medications. Now, brain health or mental health is a major important issue, uh, with a major challenge, is a very psycho, uh, socially stressful condition, and that has already led to a lot of depression, loss of life and property. And this area is again not addressed by the government or PDMA or NGOs. Uh, I think at some point, we are going to need mental health clinics. They should be available at these refugee facilities, and there should be availability of antidepressant, anti-exerty medication, antipsychotic. Because if you don't address this issue, then this mental health problem is going to lead to a very high increase in crimes and suicide rates. So these are two important outcomes of this mental health problem. Which we have already seen a lot of crime and, uh, high suicide rate in our society. This is an important, uh, problem. This is a recent paper we published, uh, that how we can address the neurological disorders of refugees and migrant population. Our disabilities is a very important outcome of these, uh, healthcare challenges. It's a major long-term impact. Pakistan already had more than eight million disabled people. And we need a rehabilitation plan for these affected, otherwise, we may have a very high number of disabled persons after these floods. These are long-term impacts of flooding. And we have to work on it, because if we don't start a back-to-back program, that these people will be, you know, on social welfare for a long time, as social said, support for a long time. So we need to start a physical rehabilitation program, and we need to address their special needs, especially if they need canes or crutches or wheelchair, we need to supply them for short-term and long-term relief. Uh, provision of healthcare, uh, in refugees is basically, is a multi-dimensional phenomenon. Now, what's happening in Pakistan? The government is doing, PDM is doing, NDM is doing, there are multiple government organizations are doing, NGOs are doing, and professional medical, but actually, there is no collaboration among any of these organizations. They are all working in silo. There is not even an interaction. The government doesn't know who is working what, and no one even knows, if you just go there and see, you see that how many people are working. So we need some interaction, and that has to be done by the government, collaboration, priority setting for each stakeholder, distribution of work, everyone is doing the same thing, and a lot of things which needs to be done are not being done. So this is something that's the responsibility of the government. If there are twenty organizations working for refugees' help, then we should, they should sit together and identify that what are the priority areas, that who should do what. So at least you are able to address all the issues of the refugees. So in conclusion, I think this is very important that now we are talking about predictability and preparation for next disaster. We have to improve our ability for disaster predictability, and we have to improve our preparedness. So this is, this should not happen, that disaster happens and then we start working on it. Uh, this is one of the major disasters which has affected, uh, thirty-three million people directly. And there are a lot of people who are being affected indirectly. So a lot of crops, loss of infrastructure, a lot, lots of food security issues. So there are many stakeholders in the country we are, are working. Now, this acute phase of flooding is going to be over in one month. And now we should focus on long-term rehabilitation and issues, and we need to deep build our health and education facilities and infrastructure. And hopefully, uh, with the right planning and right preparedness and interaction and collaboration among many stakeholders, we will be able to achieve improved health standards for our refugees and the We will be able to achieve improved health standards for our refugees and the people, thank you very much.
Thank you so much sir for your very, very interesting talk. For your very interesting talk, uh may I please invite you to uh introduce our next speaker. Professor, Dr. Livedita Ray Bennett.
Now it's, it's my pleasure to invite and introduce Dr. Livedita Ray Bennett. Uh she is an associate professor in risk management based at the University of Easther School of Business. She is a social scientist specializing in disaster risk management and international development. And the interface with public health. Dr. Ray Bennett's expertise is focused on the complexities around disaster. And vulnerability in order to reduce death and develop intervention packages to. Improve the quality and availability of post-abortion care during a major disaster. Formed by evidence-based research, she is the founding president and convener of Avoidable Death Network and needs the development. And implementation of strategy for India's growth and other public engagement activity. I'd like to thank you, Dr. Bennett, and it's over to you. Thanks for joining us.
Can I start? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, thanks. I would like to thank Pakistan Academy Services, International Center for Chemical and Biological Sciences. Sindh Innovation Research and Education Work for giving me this opportunity to speak today. But above all, I would like to thank Dr. Nimra Choudhary. She is one of our future leaders based at the Avoidable Death Network. And few other Pakistani future leaders and I would like to mention their names. Anusha Manahal, Shazza Qwaza and our Nimra. So I think they have been relentless in in really keeping the Pakistan twenty twenty-two floods on the agenda. So it's it's brilliant to see and brilliant to learn from the expert panel. So my name is Nipitita Ray Bennett. Uh I'm an associate professor based in the University of Leicester School of Business. And the title of my talk is RITCC Intervention Package to Promote Disaster Resilience. Can we move to the next one? Thank you very much. So I think the aims and objectives of today's special session is quite ambitious. And I would like to read them up carefully. So number one is what are the essential ingredients for a climate resilient healthcare system in resourceful context? Second, what are the future scenarios for a different healthcare system? Number three, what are the challenges and opportunities? And finally, what lessons can be learned? I don't think I will be able to answer all these questions. But I think I'll try my best to answer some of them. So let us start from the bottom, so what lessons can be learned? And I think it is an absolutely, absolutely very interesting and and forward-thinking question. And this takes me back to Professor Mike Patterson's um talk. And what was interesting from, uh what interesting insights from Professor Mike Patterson's talks were. The the way he was using time, the deep time, the real time and the political time. So if we go to the deep time, the geological time is billions of years. And then comes down to the meteorological time, which is nearly about two hundred years. And then we have the political time, which is nearly five years. And that's what we have actually at the moment. And that's how the political system and the policy programs work. But having said that, I don't know whether you are aware of the World Bank Group releases. Um forecast and they are called as climate risk country files. And they project the climate scenarios for about twenty years. If you want to go a little bit further down, up to forty years. So that's what we have, twenty to forty years to play around. And the World Bank Group in twenty twenty-one published this country file, risk country files. And it mentions that even under lower emissions pathways with a Paris Climate Agreement. Nearly all Asian countries, all Asian countries including Pakistan. Going to face an increase in the frequency of extreme river flows. Now this will have severe implications for our lives, livelihoods, including the health system. So these floods are going to be frequent, going to be very intense. So what lessons can we learn from this twenty twenty-two? That we have to be better, better prepared and we are not at the moment in South Asian countries. That's where I have been working for the past twenty years and especially by focusing on Bangladesh. And especially Bangladesh grassroots primary healthcare system. So we need to be better prepared and we have not been. So there is a lesson, there is something that we need to learn actively, not just passively. We have been listening, we have been taught that we are going to learn lessons, but lessons are never learned. But this is an opportunity to learn lessons within the system. What are the barriers and opportunities? I think we can go to the next slide. So based on my experience for the past six, seven years that I've been working in Bangladesh. I'm not Bangladeshi, but I have been working in Bangladesh since twenty fifteen. And we did a large scale research project at a grassroots level to identify what are the challenges. What are the challenges and what are the opportunities with regard to. With regard to removing some of the barriers that women experience, especially women with regard to sexual and reproductive health during disasters and crises. I think the article is already out, it was published by Gates Open Research. It also had Will and Will and Will and Gates Foundation Scholarship, so the article is open access and you can see it. You you can, you can download it and and read it. So I shouldn't be going into the detail of this publication, but the few things I would like to highlight. So the challenges and opportunities of reproductive health at grassroots level can be understood, understood based on two perspectives. Okay, so one perspective is that of the clients. And the other perspective is that of the services providers. So let me give you a very quick, in a very quick highlights of these challenges and opportunities. And I don't think these challenges and opportunities are unique to Bangladesh. That we need to other South Asian countries, including some of the African countries, West African countries where I worked. So we found that from the client's perspective, that we found that nearly twenty percentage of women. Were displaced in the time of floods in our research area, which was in the Silajpoti district, not in Bangladesh. We also found that nearly fifteen percent women, you know, they did not go to the. Second shelter, so they would take refuge on high walls, neighbors' houses or on a tree, but they would not go to the second shelter. And the women who went to the second shelters did not, they told us that there were lack of water, health, hygiene. And in a separate space from women, so the second shelters or the second flood shelters are not really conducive to women's conditions and women's needs. And we also found that women could not access the primary healthcare facilities partly because it was fully flooded and there were more. Public transports including both facilities. We also found that, this was the most shocking finding, is that more than fifty-three percentage of women had spontaneous abortion. Now when we tried to understand what were the circumstances that led to this spontaneous abortion. About sixty to seventy percent of women did not tell us, they went quiet, they were silent. And we were not able to explore the reasons why, because this was a large scale survey. We did not have in-depth interviews, to in-depth interviews, we should have been able to explore the reasons why. Majority of the women have spontaneous abortion during the time of floods. Uh this could be, you know, due to various reasons, it could be intimate partner violence, virus, dehydration, lack of food, all sorts of things. So we were not able to identify that. We also found, we also tried to understand that health-sticking patterns of women during the time of the floods. We found that nearly fifty percent of the women received help from large family welfare visitors. Visitors, residents, they were not going to the primary healthcare facilities. And we also found that the challenges of women to receive care from the primary healthcare facilities were, they were very expensive, number one. And number two, the interpersonal relationships are not very good, they're not receiving quality care because they're poor and vulnerable women. So these were some of the challenges from the client's perspective. So let us find out what were the challenges from the service provider's perspective. So we found out that the catchment areas were huge, the ratio between patients and service providers were disproportionate. If there was no way they could really meet the demand and the need and provide quality care to the client. Second, we also found huge shortage of skilled staff. So there are staff in the primary healthcare facilities, but they are not skilled enough. They have not been trained or they have received training twenty years ago with regard to sexual reproductive health care and has not been updated. We also found that the facilities are not very, you know, they are very substandard. They were lacking in medicines, equipments and services. So these were some of the service providers' difficulties, but also the other challenges the service providers experienced is that, you know, when everything gets flooded. The health facilities get flooded as well. Now there are no convenience for them to reach the health facilities. So sometimes they would provide service care, care to the clients by being on someone's ground. Or being on the road, exposed to the heat, sun, it's not conducive, it's not possible for the service providers to do that. And we also assessed the quality and the equipment of all the service, of all the health facilities in our research locations. And we found that, you know, only one health facility, which is kind of, we call it primary health, the primary healthcare system at different layers. Which I will talk a little bit later, that it was only the Uppuzhala Health Complex, which is a sub-district level health facility. Had nearly eighty percentage of the facility, all the equipments, medicine, supplies that they require. Whereas the other primary healthcare facilities were lacking in all the tools, equipments and services that they needed to provide a quality care. So these were some of the challenges and opportunities, challenges from the perspective of the clients and the service providers. So what can we do? We'll take to the next slide please. So based on the challenges from the perspective of the service providers, the clients. We've developed an innovation package. And this innovation package is called Integrated Intervention RHCC Package. R H means Reproductive Health Kit. C is the capacity building of the service providers and the other C is the community wellness raising program. We started the project in twenty fifteen funded by International Fund Federation. Pakistan actually was one of the partners for this consortium, which was Agar Khan University and Dr. Rehana Salam was our co-investigator. Unfortunately, throughout the, as we started progressing with the project, we had to drop Pakistan party because the funds started drilling out. So we were not able to really pilot this RHCC package in Pakistan. So we tested the intervention package in Bangladesh. So we can move to the next slide. So it was a consortium project funded by IBPS Innovation Fund and we have had quite a few partners. Uh our main principal investigator was from SADDRB, Dr. Fozia Akhtar Khuda. And as they moved on, we've had a few others and the implementing partner leader was Nimesha Boswamy from the funders side. A South Asia regional office based in New Delhi. We can move to the next slide. Yeah, this is the research team and and lots of people involved. I was leading as a principal investigator, so we can move to the next one. Yes, the project went through different phases, so number one was fifteen to twenty eighteen where we. Developed this evidence-based integrated intervention package, we piloted it, tested it, evaluated it, publications are all out. And then from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty was the second phase where I tried to reduce the cost of the RHCC intervention package. And then twenty twenty to twenty one, I double, so in order to reduce the cost of the RHCC intervention package. I developed a protocol for two health phys, health reproductive health kits that I'm I'm going to talk you through later on. And then in twenty twenty one, I had further funds from IPF to position the reproductive health innovation package in Afghanistan. But when I started the project, sadly that the, you know, Taliban government came to power and the funds were withdrawn. And in twenty twenty-two, I I raised further funds from the government of Bangladesh to position RHCC in hard-to-reach districts of Bangladesh. But due to funding challenges in terms of receiving funds from low income, high income. Sadly, after two months starting the project, I had to withdraw from the project. So I've had a little bit of a hard time in terms of replicating RHCC in other parts of the world. But what I will do today, I will just talk you through about this RHCC intervention. And so let's move on to the next one. Okay, so what is RHCC and why have we done this? I think the the main objective of RHCC intervention package is to reduce maternal mortality. And morbidity during disasters and crises. Like in the previous speaker, mentioned that Pakistan has the highest maternal mortality and morbidity. Now, we don't have much data on the maternal mortality and morbidity in disasters and crisis situation. There's one particular report that came out in twenty fifteen by UNFBA. UNFBA estimated that the number of maternal deaths in thirty-five countries. That were affected by humanitarian crisis or fragile conditions in twenty fifteen was estimated to be hundred and eighty-five thousand. And this is sixty-one percent of the global estimated maternal deaths. And is one point nine times higher than the global estimated maternal maternal mortality ratio. Of two hundred and sixteen maternal deaths per hundred thousand life paths. So it is a major concern and especially this maternal mortality and morbidity takes place in the developing countries, nearly ninety-nine percentage of them. The second is that the RHCC's objective is to continue service delivery. As I said, we found that the service delivery gets disrupted due to floods, cyclones or any other kind of natural hazards that take place in the rural locations of the developing countries. So we wanted the service delivery to go on at UNC, which is a primary healthcare and sub-primary healthcare facility. Third, we also wanted to make the services available. We found that, you know, our focus was on post-abortion care complications. Now in everyday life, post-abortion care complications were not being provided, partly because the staff were not skilled enough. And second, the tools, equipment, supplies that they need were not available. So imagine when the services are not available in the day-to-day life. How do we expect the services to be available during the time of disasters? So what we need, we need the services to come and happen in an everyday life so that the system is better prepared to deliver when there is a crisis or disaster. And third, a fourthly is to promote resilience in primary healthcare system. I'm sure everybody in this room and the audience would know about the United Nations Centre for Disaster Reduction. Launched in twenty fifteen and will continue till twenty thirteen and it's the successor of the Higher Go Framework for Action. Now the Centre for Emergency Development, Target Four. Is about reducing disaster damage to critical infrastructure and disruption of basic services. And this connects with the priority for action three, which talks about investing in disaster reduction for resilience. And its clauses that are thirty I, thirty E and thirty-three C. And they directly emphasize the importance of enhancing and building the resilience of health systems and infrastructure. Now the question is, how can we build resilience in healthcare and healthcare system? Now the United Nations Centre for Emergency Development does not tell us about that. It doesn't also tell us which healthcare system we should be promoting resilience internally. We don't know about those things, those things are quite open for anybody to interpret. So what we did in the context of our study, we tried to build the resilience of the primary healthcare system in Bangladesh. And in doing so, so that we can contribute directly, Sustainable Development Goal number three. And as you would only read a couple, you know, that many of the targets of Sustainable Development Goal three is now reducing maternal mortality, morbidity and morbidity among other things. Now how can we build this? So we can go to the next slide. So basically, the, so the resilience is, can be understood in a different way, in different context. Now in the context of our study, basically what we wanted to do is that the services should continue. During the time of disasters as well as in everyday life. Now, uh if we look into some of the publications, there are very few publications in terms of promoting resilience at a primary healthcare system. But Kowalski and Al's work is a bit exceptional. So according to Kowalski, published in Lancet in twenty sixteen. They said that the, you know, the resilient primary healthcare system should aim to continue to provide services. In disaster situation with minimal disruption, with minimal disruption, so the services should continue. However, developing a resilient health system is a challenge. Is a challenge particularly for countries where, you know, where the the staffs are overstretched and the governance is very weak. So it is very difficult to promote resilience in many of our South Asian countries because we see this kind of challenges. And also resilience demands mechanisms to ensure essential health practices are delivered regardless of the stress on the system. And must include the capacity to address on the system. A capacity to address the special needs of women, adolescents and other vulnerable groups. So at a minimum, at a minimum, the building of resilient and strong health systems requires an emphasis on increasing and optimizing the health workforce and improving facility capability. Now, increasing and optimizing health workforce and improving facility capability demands multiple dimensions from multiple actors and long-term financial commitment from the national government and international bodies. But it is, it was not possible for us. It was a small-scale project that we did funded by International Plan Parenthood Federation's Innovation Fund. So what we tried to do, we tried to promote a minimum resilience. It was a minimum resilience. It wasn't a full-scale resilience that Koblenzki was talking about in Lancet in twenty sixteen. So with that minimum resilience framework, we tried to promote resilience through our low budget with high impact RHCC intervention. So with that, I will move on to the RHCC interventions. So we can move to the next slide. Again, the RHCC's main objective was to improve the quality and availability of post-emotional care during the flood in Belkuti in Bangladesh. We can move to the next one. Yeah, so this is very quickly, I will run through. It was in Bangladesh. We did it in Raja Shahi Division, which was up north in Bangladesh. So we can move to the next one. Yeah, this is, you can see, we did it in Belkuti. All the blue colors of the rivers, it's surrounded by river, and it gets flooded every year, annually. We also did a bit of a ten-year database search to find out whether it gets flooded or not. It gets flooded all the time. And we did, we consulted with the Ministry of Disaster Management and various organizations to find which area gets flooded all the time, and this was one of them. And of many other districts that Bangladesh gets flooded. We can move to the next one. Yes, so this is the healthcare system in Bangladesh. Something similar to one of the speakers who showed their Pakistan's healthcare system. So we have the tertiary, secondary, and primary, but our focus was on the primary level. And it's partly because in many of the South Asian countries, including other low and developing countries, and also high-income countries, primary healthcare system is a first point of contact. It's a first point of contact both in rural and urban areas, and especially in rural areas because majority of the people can't afford to go to a private healthcare clinic. So it is a primary healthcare system that needs to be made resilient, and that's where the focus should be in terms of providing care and the services that poor and vulnerable people need during the time of floods and crisis. So we focused on the primary healthcare system. We selected all the primary healthcare facilities run by the government, not the non-government primary healthcare facilities. Because in Bangladesh, unlike maybe in Pakistan, the healthcare services are delivered through NGO collaboration and coordination. So for the purpose of this study, we only selected the primary healthcare facilities that are run by the government, and there were six of them. So we can move to the next one. So the first phase of the research project went through different phases, three in particular, in combination with quantitative and qualitative research methods. So in the first phase, we did baseline studying, where we did large-scale household surveys with a population of more than twenty-eight thousand. And then we also did a facility assessment using our structured facility assessment tool. So we developed that. That is part of the RHCC intervention package. Our tool can assess the quality and the equipment and the supplies that they have at health facility level and whether they are ready enough, whether they can deliver services during the time of disasters and crises. So based on those baseline data, we developed our intervention package, that is the RHCC, and we tested the intervention package during the time of floods. So we, as I said, we found that the healthcare staff were not trained, so we trained them. So nearly twenty-six percent of the healthcare staff were being trained by our service providers and our consortium partners. So during the time of floods, we ran the intervention package for three months. And during that three months, we made about twenty percent of the estimated population received care. And then after the intervention, we did evaluation, which was after a month and a two later of the floods. And we found that, we spoke with the clients, we also spoke with the service providers, and some of the findings are in the next slide. We can move to the next slide, please. Yes, so this is again, one second, that three different components we, so we found that, you know, the health services, the health facilities were not equipped to provide substantial reproductive healthcare to women. So what we did, we purchased four reproductive health kits from UNFPA from Copenhagen and positioned them before the mountain season. And to administer that kit, we developed the capacity of the health service providers, which were about twenty-six percentage of the health facilities. The staff did not have the required training, so we trained them. And we also raised communities awareness by holding reproductive workshops in the community by telling them that, hey, guess what? If you have some reproductive health-related challenges during that time of upcoming flood, you can visit your primary healthcare facility and you will be able to receive the care. We can move to the next one. So then what, so we can move to the next one. So this one, I will come back to it. So here's the evaluation of component number one, which is positioning reproductive health kit eight. As I said, we didn't have the supplies and equipment to get it from the government, so we had to get it from the UNFPA from Copenhagen. And we found actually that the quality of care went up. The integration relationships between clients and the service providers were very good. As I said, twenty percent of the estimated population were able to receive care during the time of floods. And it was very positive. It was very positive. And the capacity that we built for some of the service providers continues. So we can move to the second one now. Yes, so this is, ah. Maybe if we could move to the next. Yes, so this is the capacity, this is component number two, which is a capacity building. So we, we, we trained nearly twenty-six percent of the healthcare staff across six health facilities. And they, they had to do two tests. So the, one was a competence test, which was kind of an exam, which they had to do after they were being trained. And everybody passed, and the most, the majority scored eighty-four percentage or higher. And then based on their opinions, you know, these are, these are self-opinions, and based on their perceptions and opinions, and they felt that they had learned a lot and they were able to provide quality care. And it also helped in terms of keeping records in the registers. The registers were not being maintained. So we, through this training, they were being taught how to maintain the registers. We can move to the next one. So the third component was community awareness. So for the community awareness, we developed behavior change communication posters. It was translated in Bengali. The Bengali posters were distributed across all our, in our catchment area. And we also hung the behavior change communication posters across fortified health facilities. But we were not able to really assist the evaluation, assist the impact of this community, and the awareness raising community workshops. But we definitely trained the two hundred and three grassroots health workers, so they were all aware of the challenges of reproductive health during the time of floods. So we can move to the next one. So the overall, the intervention package was quite positive and successful. And IPF called it one of the most successful innovation fund projects. It was also shortlisted for Leicester's Research Excellence Award. It provided data from the Times Higher Education Supplement for the Sustainable Development Goal Three, and have had various accolades and achievements for this RHCC intervention package. Now, the Ministry of Health and Family Welfare of the government of Bangladesh really liked it because we implemented with the government, government service providers. So it was making, it was, it was a direct impact to the health facilities. Then the government told me the committee to really scale it up, we need to reduce the cost. Because what happened in the past was that, for the first phase, it was funded by International Plan Parenthood Federation. So to make the project sustainable and integrate into the system, the government told me we need to reduce the cost. And we found that the expensive bit was component number two, which is the reproductive health kit eight. Because I had to procure it from Copenhagen, clear the customs, and bring it and put it in a warehouse at a flat temperature because it has got certain requirements to position the RHCC eight. So to reduce the cost of the RHCC, so I started, I then moved into the next phase. And the next phase was funded by, again, IPF, but also E S R C's Impact Acceleration. What I did, I then even started working on reducing the cost of the RHCC by developing two low-budget reproductive health kits. So we can move to the next one. Next one, please. So what did I do? So now, I developed these two kits, Facility Reproductive Health Kit and Crisis Reproductive Health Kit. Now, both are very, very low-budget, and they're based on the principle of localization, by which I mean everything, everything, supplies, equipments, too, can be procured locally. And while I was developing the protocol, we were in the height of the COVID nineteen. So we really understood that, you know, how the supply chain can get affected if there is a huge mega crisis again in the near future, and it will happen, or a mega disaster. So we thought that, you know, the protocol has to be based on localization so that the national governments can procure the kits and access them based on all the supplies that are available locally. And the second is sustainability. It has to be purchased or procured or bought by the government and integrate into the national healthcare system so that they are available at primary healthcare level. So we can move to the next one. So the, so we did, to develop the protocol, we did an extensive systematic literature review. We did one-to-one virtual consultations with key informants, and they are technical experts. And we also conducted virtual stakeholders workshops.
Dr. Benif, we have short of time. We'll use this here talk in two, two, three minutes.
Okay, so I'm nearly there. And we can move to the next one. So this is just the picture of the consultations that we did with fifteen to eighteen and national and international organizations to develop the protocol for the facility kit and the crisis kit. We can move to the next one, please. Yeah, so the facility kit is designed to position in facilities, especially the primary healthcare setup, before a disaster. And the type B, which is a crisis kit, is designed to be lightweight and can be carried by health service providers for the people who are either in emergency shelter or in a refugee camp. We can move to the next one. Yes, so, you know, these kits, you can read the protocols. They are available on IBPS website. And as I said, last year, we were getting, we were prepared to position these two kits in Afghanistan, but due to political crisis in Afghanistan, we were not able to move into the third phase of the project. So that's where we are. So thank you for listening. Otherwise, if anybody is interested to learn more about the RHCC intervention package, which is, as I said, it's a low-cost but high-impact intervention package and can be sustainable if the government buys this package and can be positioned in any health facility, especially at the primary health level with disasters. So thank you for listening and thanks for giving me this opportunity to speak with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Nedita. Very enlightening, and this is something we, we need to learn from and we should practice in our own country, too. So very interesting. I would like to especially mention the immense support you and ADN have provided to organize this seminar and for this great cause for the people of Pakistan. I would also like to highlight that the tremendous interest this ADN event has received will help us to place ADN as a valued data partner in national disaster risk management. Thank you so much, Dr. Nedita. I would like to introduce my next speaker, Dr. Vasna Phali. She is a Pakistani technocrat, social activist, and internationally acclaimed gynecologist and health expert. She is advisor on maternal and child health to KPK Department of Health. She is a technical advisor to the Federal Ministry of National Health Regulations and Services in Islamabad. She has served as a member of COVID nineteen Task Force in the Federal Ministry of Science and Technology. We are very fortunate to have you among us and keen to hear what you have to share with us today. And I especially like to mention that she would be giving her lecture directly from the airport because she was in a flight just a few minutes before, and she has kindly agreed that she, you know, she would present her thoughts to us. So thank you so much, Dr. Vasna, and over to you.
Thank you, Homera, and thank you for having me online and amongst you. And I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. I'd like to thank my colleagues at ICCBS and the organizing committee for organizing such an important and very valid and pertinent lecture series. And I hope we can all learn from each other to make sure that we avert some of the challenges and issues that have arisen during or have been highlighted during the floods that Pakistan has faced. So if we can go on to the next slide, I'm going to try and be very succinct because I know that we're running ahead of time. And we've covered some of, some of these discussions. My learning speakers have covered a lot of the work that I want to talk about in terms of the situation analysis. We know, we've just been faced by the catastrophic floods. We were, that have, you know, left a lot of our country submerged in water. We know that Pakistan is the fifth most climate vulnerable country in the world. There was a Climate Health and Vulnerability Assessment done by the World Bank. Homera, thank you so much for conveying your very gracious introduction. I'd also like to point out that I work for the Global Financing Facility as a country director, which is the venture capital fund aligned to the World Bank for filling the gaps in former term and child health. So we know that Pakistan is the top ten most climate effective countries as highlighted by the Global Climate Risk Index. And it's hugely sensitive to climate change and extreme weather events, whether it be droughts, floods, the melting of the glaciers because increase in temperature. And so we know that floods are going to happen time and time and again. So, next slide, please. And I'm going to skim through the slides because I want to get to the point, what do we do? How do we actually build a resilient health system? And I know that my, my colleague, I was listening to Professor Vasse and then Nedita, sorry if I pronounced your name incorrectly. We need to look at vulnerable groups, whether it be marginalized communities like refugees, whether it be women and children, but we need to look at vulnerable groups in order to provide essential services that don't stop when we have a disaster. We saw that in COVID, we've seen that in droughts, and we've seen that in floods. So I'll touch upon that a little bit later. But we know that Pakistan has an extremely fine balancing act in terms of the social determinants of health and people's access to water, nutrition, shelter. And there are inequalities and instabilities that are highlighted more when there is a difficult situation, such as a drought or a flood or an earthquake. So we need to overcome this, or we need to try and strategize the mitigation processes in order to provide healthcare infrastructure to the people that need it the most, that can't access it. We know that Pakistan's got a huge, high population, two hundred and twenty million, which is a rough estimate. So it's a high population density. Hello?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you, Dr. Vasna? Sorry, apologies. I, I, I lost you there. So, um. Can we have the next slide, please? I can't see the slides at the moment. Next slide, please.
Can you see the slides now?
Yes, I can. Sorry, I can see them. So you can see Pakistan's at number five, as I've just iterated next. In terms of vulnerabilities, we can skim through this. It just gives an overview of the long-term climate vulnerability of different countries. And we. Go next. So we know that we are signatory to the United Nations Framework on the Climate So we know that we are signatory to the United Nations framework on the climate change and that aims to reduce global temperature to well below two degrees further. If we don't reduce temperature to two degrees below what it is now, we, Pakistan is housing a large proportion of the world's glaciers and the world's glaciers will melt and they will add to the, a huge river population. The Indus is a, is a very big river, one of the largest in the world. And this is what's causing the floods. So we're extremely, you know, susceptible to floods, which has been highlighted. And this is going to happen time and time again. So we really need to think about structurally how we are going to mitigate and adapt our system. So thirty percent of the healthcare infrastructure in Sin province, Sin has been destroyed by the floods. Next slide, please. So how, what, what can we do or what has the government of Pakistan done to depict or to show the essential role of climate change? And I will just, I will share this presentation with you and it will go through in detail the different intervention packages and the different policy documents. But we have looked at climate change as an external threat, an external problem that is going to, Pakistan's going to be faced with. And there has been a joint external evaluation. I refer to the Climate Health and Vulnerability Assessment of the World Bank, which hasn't been published yet, but it will be made public later on this year. We have the Disease Control Package III, which is a universal health package, and it, and it's a big environmental component. So we, we do know about it, but what are we doing about it? Next slide, please. So everybody has heard, I'm sure that you, everybody has had people that have been affected by these catastrophic floods, that are really, you know, brought at home the whole challenge of climate change, both nationally and internationally. And as I said, relevant to my talk and my area of interest, the people have died, but thirty percent of healthcare facilities, 2,000 health facilities have been fully or partially damaged. And then we are unable to deliver the essential services. So my, so my colleagues, Nadia, stated that there is pregnant women, there are sexually reproductive, these are essential services that don't stop in the face of an emergency. And we are unable to provide care to those who are vulnerable and needed the most. Next. Next, we... So a lot of the public health gains that we have made or have been able to achieve are at risk due to this direct, indirect of climate variability, climate change. And everybody knows about the 12, oh, the seventeen Sustainable Development Bowl, but how can we strengthen health resilience to climate change? So we, I talked about D C P three, it's universal health coverage, providing services at primary healthcare, providing women and child friendly centers that are able to be there despite floods, despite droughts, despite earthquakes, and that are able to provide services in the face of adversity. We need to look at how we are going to provide services like cold storage, immunization, clean drinking water, because these are the things that are affected at the time of an emergency or at the time, especially now that we've got floods. And we also need to have, next slide, please. So we also need to look at water security, we need to look at nutrition and food security. Pakistan is an extremely food insecure country and nutrition is a big problem in the sense that the malnutrition, malnourished index ranges from forty-eight to fifty-two percent in different regions and different areas. And this is increased during adversity. So we need to make sure that we have, that we can safeguard access to adequate food. Agriculture will be affected if there's floods. So food, so the four main things that are affected by climate change, heat-related illnesses, so extreme heat, drought, food insecurity, nutrition, waterborne diseases, diarrhoeal diseases, childhood, less than five, children less than five, that is the biggest cause of death in Pakistan due to cholera, diarrhoeal diseases, and dengue and malaria, so vector borne diseases, which are increasing because of the stagnant water and because of the risks borne by climate change. And this is not, this is not foregoing mental and social, psychosocial health, because if you're marginalized and you don't have access to care and you are in a very desperate situation, I think Dr. Vasse mentioned that and that we mustn't forget that. And also reproductive health, women will continue to have babies. So these, this will continue. So next, please. So I just talked about heat-related illnesses. Climate change is expected to increase the mean annual temperature. And then we'll have heat waves and this has its own inherent risks. Next. Food and nutrition. So I've talked about nutrition, the availability of food, but also long term, I think our scientists need to be working together with us to work out how we can mitigate the, the problems affected or affected through agriculture, through extreme weather conditions and changing precipitation patterns. I think we need to really focus on agrotech to make sure that we safeguard and become more food secure. Next. And then I've just talked about this risk of diarrhea and gastroenteritis. And floods have a huge impact on water safety. We, we cannot, a large proportion of our population doesn't have access to clean drinking water, which is a basic human right. And it's worsened during floods. So how do we mitigate that? We need, we need to think about that in non-emergency situations, but also in emergency situations. Next. And then we can skip this, next. So how do we build a resilient health system? And we have talked about it at COP twenty-six and we're coming up to COP twenty-seven. How is it that we can have this framework? WHO's Outkiding Operational Framework for Building Climate Resilient Healthcare Systems built on ten components and the building blocks to health system strengthening. And I'll just go this, over this really briefly. Next. So we need leadership and governance. We need to talk to each other, one. As you know, Pakistan is a devolved, a highly devolved health structure. And it became apparent in the COVID crisis, also during the floods, that there needs to be coordination. So we had the N C O C, now we have the National Flood Response Committee. And there needs to be a reserve list of health personnel, so that will touch on the health workforce, that becomes activated when there is an issue or when there is a disaster. So that will touch upon emergency preparedness and having the skilled personnel on tap to be available in the event of an emergency. And that's, those skilled personnel can be volunteers, it can be last year medical, final year medical students, but we need to prepare and there needs to be a sort of a command center where these people can come on and be in, like enlisted in the face of a disaster, be it floods, be it any kind of pandemic. Health, skilled health force needs to be available. And we have this skilled health force, it's just connecting the dots and making logistical and arrangements to provide the skill set at the correct place. We also need to have a coordination framework based at the federal government. Despite the fact that Pakistan is a devolved health system, if we don't have leadership and governance as illustrated by the N C O C and the National Flood Committee, it is very difficult to make sure that logistical supplies procurement get to the right place and gaps are addressed. We need to connect those dots using information technology, early warning systems. We do not have a comprehensive climate-informed health early warning system. And I think that's a glaring mission from the government of Pakistan. We need to work together with I T professionals to provide that. This surveillance system can be joined up with the provinces. And in an act, I understand that health is a devolved subject, but in act of God in a foster-major circumstance, the sustainability of a system and the linking and the coordination is paramount. And it should be taking it into consideration and the provinces should work together, together with the federal government. Next, please. So as I said, there's important gaps between policies and practice for essential medical products and the procurement and logistical supply chains, the forecasting and procurement needs to be done using I T technology. And so far, there's been no assessment of technologies to ensure health, you know, resilience to health change. So I'll try and conclude this. I'm sorry I rushed through this because I'm very conscious that we're running out of time. Next. Financing. And I, you know, I want to spend a few time, few minutes talking about this. Without money, we cannot do anything. There is huge amounts of funding to be tapped from climate change or climate resilience donors and funding venues. And we should be looking at seeing how we can tap into those, especially in light of the issues that are going to face Pakistan time and time again due to its, its position within the Climate Vulnerability Index. So risk pooling in Pakistan does not account for climate and health-related risk. And we have, and we should involve public-private partnership. We have limited experience with strategic purchasing in Pakistan. We know that out-of-pocket expenses are paid seventy percent by the, you know, by the public. The government does not provide, so we need to look at how we can best use those donor funding pertaining to climate change. I will stop there. I have, I'm very grateful for this, for Homera and her team to give me this opportunity. And I hope that some of the key points that I highlighted into how to build a resilient health system will have some, will breed some discussion and I hope that we can work together to provide the health services that our country desperately needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Vasna. This commences our lecture session. I would like to thank the esteemed speakers for their thoughts. And now I would like to invite our speakers, Dr. Vasse, Dr. Bilal Alenber and Dr. Vasna Vachchi for a brief question-answer session. So please, anyone in the audience, if they want to ask questions, keep your questions ready. Our speakers will be on the stage very soon.
Any questions?
See, in a country where healthcare is extremely fragmented and there are huge financial constraints, how would you think that such thing would actually happen as resilient healthcare system?
Okay, now there are three healthcare systems working in the country at this point. There is a government healthcare system which is about 500 billion rupees, mostly provincial, very little federal. And then you have a private healthcare system which is out of pocket. And then you have a healthcare system which is run by the NGOs, which is entrepreneurship-based model. I think major problem in Pakistan is that there's no interaction among these healthcare systems. So they all work inside those. So there are like places in Karachi, there are like, there are three dialysis centers in one place and there are two eye hospitals. So what is happening that, you know, people are doing same thing at different places without any interaction. So we need some kind of interaction, like a model which covers all the health, all the health systems. That's number one. Number two, the government, they have to improve the funding, the financing of their system. So out of 3,000 billion rupees Pakistan spends on health, government only contributes 500 billion rupees, which is very little as compared to other government expenditures. So Pakistan has to at least spend at least one percent of its GDP on healthcare system, which has been the main investor of all the government they have come to power. So that's one thing, that Pakistan have to improve the government healthcare funding. And the government healthcare funding is coming, going to come from two places. Number one, international donor funding, because Pakistan only gets 50 billion dollars as international donor funding from WHO and other organizations compared to Bangladesh, which gets 10 billion dollars, which is like twenty times more money from the international donor agencies for the healthcare system. So we need to get our financing much better, we need to spend more from the government. And then we have to integrate all three healthcare systems to improve the quality of care and delivery of care. That's what I think is the solution. Any comments? Yes?
Thank you, Dr. Vasse. I think I can be heard through this.
Yeah.
So the idea of avoiding redundancy by collaboration is great. And what we see, like Dr. Bilal talked about, that there is a way mitigation can be done. I think disaster after disaster, somebody comes and talks about how we need to prepare for the next disaster. And probably it's the disaster in itself that we're never able to prepare for it. Maybe we should be looking into factors why it happens and how maybe we need to develop a philanthropic, you know, collaborative crowd source that develops a model and then identifies the area where each agency with their strengths can focus on that area. Because what, what happens in every disaster is people are looking up to someone else to provide them care. We are looking up to the state to provide care. The state itself is looking up to somewhere else. We know that the state is never able to provide for this. And like the redundancy in the field medical camps, philanthropic agencies just coming to fill that role. It's probably non-state elements that need to come up in terms of mitigation of disasters as well, because unfortunately state has failed to mitigate these disasters. So there's something that we need to collaborate and get forward and move through.
Good.
Well, I think... Yes, so you basically raised two very, very important and interconnected points. One is mitigation of disasters, the other one is more specific and focus on the health factor. health factor. Mitigation of disasters, I think, you know, we've gone past that stage, it's state, you know, the factors, and, you know, by saying we, I don't have, we, the Pakistani, I have to look at, it's very much part and parcel of it, where the disasters cannot be eliminated. What we need to do is we need to prepare ourselves, plan ourselves to deal with those disasters, minimize the disaster risk of that change. And come up with an interactive and integrated approach, which basically includes a number of different instruments for dealing with it. So if you mean mitigation by elimination, that is not possible, adaptation of is also not possible in the strict sense of the climate change induced disaster, but maybe for others, yes, we can. Now, when we say the health sector, the health system, Dr. Vasey already mentioned about the need for coordination and integration, and I think no one can deny that, you know, there is this kind of a very hybrid system, and the gaps are basically made out of the public fund system, which is out there by the private sector, you know, God, shared, and then the rest coming from the public sector. Now, your point is interesting with the philanthropic kind of activities, and that need to be integrated and coordinated with the larger system. But I think what we see is the therapy and the philanthropic aspirations, they really fuel up whenever there's a disaster. So you cannot really have a system based on it. Yes, people are generous, they do come out and they do help people, and we all do that. But I think it's come to extremely difficult to really make that part of the system. So that challenge is got to be here. And there's a fundamental need is, as Dr. Vasey already mentioned, there is a need for the government to come up with a lot more spending on the health system. I think this is absolutely, absolutely fundamental. And secondly is even the charities and the philanthropic and the civil society, they do not really reach out to the remote, remote areas, and that still remains a potential need in the region of the province to come up with the services. So I think, yeah, coordination, integration, more vibration among the different actors who do it, but I think the top of everything is the government, the government has to come up with a system, have to come with the resources, build minimum gaps and deficiencies of that with the other actors to fill out. So I think this is, to me, this is the way to go.
Yeah, thank you so much, Dr. Bilal and Dr. Vasey. We need to conclude our session. And Dr. Hmairah will give the concluding remarks on behalf of I C C P S. Thanks, Dr. Hmairah.
Thank you, Dr. Nimra. Honorable Dr. Bilal Anwar, Chief Executive National Disaster Risk Management Fund. Honorable Professor Dr. Muhammad Vasey, Secretary, Pakistan Academy of Sciences and Chapter. My dear teacher, Professor Dr. Muhammad Iwal Chaudhary, Director, International Center for Chemical and Biological Sciences and Core Medical General Counsel. Dear Dr. Nimra, Representative of Avoidable Health Network. My dear students and online participants, I, Dr. Hmairah Zafar, on behalf of I C C P S, would like to express gratitude to all the speakers. Their contributions have helped in understanding of the subject, and presentations have been absolutely world-class and extremely high-quality on a topic which is relevant to national, regional, and global needs. International Center for Chemical and Biological Sciences and S I N, along with other partners, is working closely, the government of S I N, in developing healthcare infrastructure and climate resilient infrastructure, which is certainly part of this overall research paradigm. I would also like to thank online and physically present participants for their engagement and as well as their interactive participation. Finally, I would like to suggest that participants and resource person of this important international seminar have become part of the network, constantly engaged with co-organizing institutions such as Avoidable Death Network, which is represented by Dr. Nimra in Pakistan, Pakistan Academy of Sciences, which is represented by Professor Dr. Vasey, Secretary, S I N Chapter. I would also like to acknowledge the presence of Mr. Bilal, who is the Chief Executive Officer of National Disaster Risk Management Fund. He's a very busy person, but his presence here in Karachi for this seminar represents his commitment for national cause, and we all enjoyed and benefited from his presentation. I would also like to thank Dr. Nimra for moderating the whole event, and I would, at the end, I would also like to thank all of the participants in this room. And with that, we would like to conclude this important seminar, and we hope that if any one of you have question, you can email to the speakers, we will share their email ID. And in the end, I would like to invite my distinguished guests and my teacher for lunch upstairs.
Only three of us?
And rest of you can also have lunch.
Recording stopped.